Outreach items associated with it. There's a survey that is out on the town website, a master plan community survey, and that can be taken until January 24th. Again, it's online. And there is something called a kitchen conversation. You can get a little kit from the PLUS office and invite some friends over and have a conversation about what you think should be included in the master plan. And you can get that information from Meg Trudell at the PLUS office. We have another item that came in after the agenda was published, and that is that the Massachusetts Division of Fisheries and Wildlife is going to be holding two virtual public hearings on January 23rd, one at 1:30 and one at 6:30. And I'm going to read a little bit of what it says on the state's website, and the link will be, we can post the link online. The public can learn more about proposed deer regulations and provide comments at the public hearings. Oh, sorry, I forwarded too much. Public hearings have been scheduled to gather public feedback about proposed regulatory changes related to deer hunting seasons, as well as new rules designed to prevent the spread of chronic wasting disease to deer in Massachusetts. There's a bunch of information on this website. Erica has got it up on the screen. There is written comment that can be submitted using a feedback form, which is online. Those comments are due by 4:00 PM on February 5th. The changes, I think, that may be most relevant for us to be aware of is that, sorry, I'm just going through the website here. To create a winter primitive firearms deer season for the month of January, not this January, on Martha's Vineyard, Elizabeth Island, and Nantucket. So if people are interested in this, and there are some other associated deer-related amendments that are being considered and that they want input on, which are listed on that website, but if people are interested in this, they really need to go and participate in the hearings.
Just a little bit of follow-up. I've had some hunters have called me and had sort of explained different ways they think that we could cull the herd more efficiently, even in the existing time we have, or a little bit more, but not a separate one. And I hope that they will do exactly what you're saying, because there may be, you know, some of their ideas might really fit here.
Yep. It's entirely regulated by the state, so if people have other ideas, they need to bring them forward. I think there was a group that met with the state biologists last fall about some of this, and that's where this is stemming from.
Okay. I am going to open select.
Was there one more thing?
I think you were going to mention the other bigness.
Yes, that's right where I'm headed. So I'm going to open.
But, sorry, one more thing.
Sorry.
We had a technical snafu, and the audio wasn't on when you made the Bessie announcement. Do you want to maybe just repeat it?
I would be happy to repeat it. It was so brief. So the February 3rd information session with the Bureau of Safety and Environmental Enforcement has been postponed. We don't have a date yet for the reschedule. We will keep you posted. So we just heard that today.
And we suspect, or you suspect, it may have to do with?
The administrative transition at the federal level, that all the political staff are turning over at all the federal agencies. And so approvals and so forth are all being held until new folks are in charge.
Madam Chair, postponed by them.
Oh, absolutely. It was postponed by them. Yeah, yeah, thanks.
It wasn't you, Tom?
I got it right the first time. It got more complicated when we did it the second time around. Okay. And I am thrilled to open select board comments with the announcement that I think most people have heard, because the press picked it up pretty quickly this morning, but the NOAA vessel speed reduction rules that were proposed that we have been advocating hard against have been withdrawn by NOAA. And so we have a big win in terms of the risk to our ferry system and our quality of life on Nantucket. And I really want to thank everyone who added to the 90,000 public comments they got from up and down the eastern seaboard that I think basically just overwhelmed the process. And I just am excited that our voices were heard, and I want to thank everybody from the governor down to everyone who wrote an email or sent a comment locally for participating in this coordinated effort. I think we did a great job as a community, and we were successful. So that is great news. Any other select board announcements or comments? Okay, seeing none. We don't have any response to public comment questions from last week. This is now the time for public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Okay, I have one hand up. Megan Perry?
Thanks very much, Brooke. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yep, go ahead.
Great, I'll try to be really quick. I know you have that three-minute limit. So I submitted a letter to the ZBA today. I didn't submit it to this board, because I didn't get it in time. It's kind of a follow-up on information that I previously provided with regards to PFAS. I had Dr. John Kuhn come in and speak in 2018 and 2019 regarding PFAS, and he was kind of brushed off as maybe one of those crazy greenies that's talking about things. And John basically said, you know, you can listen to me now, or you can call me in 10 years when you realize you have a huge problem. And it hasn't quite been 10 years, but we do have a huge problem. And what really kind of provoked me to write this letter is from the August 29th, 2024 Capitol Programs Committee meeting, CPC meeting, that the town had. The meeting minutes are still not available. They're about a year behind, but it is available on the town's YouTube channel to watch. Couple of things that I wanted to highlight, and I'll be very frank, because they directly affect me, my family, our health, and the community I live in. I live mid-island, near a private drinking well that was flagged as having unsafe drinking water due to PFAS contamination. So high with PFAS that the Wanta Comet Water Director went before the CPC requesting funds to provide municipal water to be installed ahead of other projects that have been discussed in past or previous year's budget discussions. To kind of give a little point of reference, Massachusetts has a set maximum contamination level of 20 parts per trillion for the combined concentration of only six PFAS chemicals. There's something like 16,000 PFAS chemicals. We just don't know them all. And those levels are going to be changing and decreasing. It was a little alarming to me that we have that going on, and a little alarming that I was kind of stumbling upon it at a CPC meeting, and that this wasn't really brought forward. Couple other kind of Cliff Notes versions, I guess I'll say, of that meeting is that there's the potential to be needing to install a filtration system for the municipal water supply, which is around a $60 million cost, in addition to adding some wells. One well is currently offline and has been offline. The Water Directorate has incited, some of you might have experienced a decrease in water pressure over the summer because of it. And that's out of concern for the well being used and pulling the contamination plume closer to more municipal wells. So I'm very concerned about this. I'm concerned that we don't have, you know, we'd have the potential for not safe drinking water, that water pressure is decreased. And if water pressure is decreased, that means the ability for a firefighter to put out a fire is also lessened. So I just would like for this to become something that you put on the forefront, because it really doesn't matter if you, how many affordable housing units you have, or how many rotaries you have. If we don't have clean drinking water, it's really important that this needs to be out in front and that this become a priority for this board to be looking into. So I know you've got the three minutes. I tried my best. Thanks so much. Have a great night.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak on items not on the agenda? Anyone in the room? Okay, hearing none. There's no new business tonight. We have minutes and treasury warrants for approval. Do I have a motion? I know Matt had one.
I had one change on the minutes. I wanted, I opened it giving the definition of what a agency was. So instead of it saying Matt Fee questioned, I'd like it to say Matt Fee read the definition, comma, "A person, business, or corporation engaged in the town Nantucket in the business of renting, leasing, or keeping for rent any vehicle," and then, you know, quotation mark, "and expressed his opinion," and the rest of it's the same. So I just wanted to put that in, because the definition, the definition is how I led it, and I think it's important. So I'd like approval for that to be in. Thank you.
Okay, so is that a motion to approve that amendment?
Yes.
Okay, for both minutes and treasury warrants?
And everything else, I'm good, yeah.
So I have a, thanks, Matt. Second?
Second.
Okay, by roll call, Matt?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. Erica, do you want to do gift acceptances for us?
Sure. You have two gift acceptances tonight. One is for human services, and this was actually a correction of a gift from Hal Miller to the Salt Marsh Senior Center that was previously accepted on November 6, 2024. Previously, it had said the gift was $200, but in actuality, it was 500. So you're just making a correction to that. And then the Fire Department has what's becoming an annual gift of $1,000 from the Sternlicht Foundation for training initiatives led by the Fire Department.
Terrific. Motion to accept the gifts and send notes of thanks from someone?
So moved?
Second.
Okay, by roll call, Matt?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And thank you. And apologies for the error on the other one. Okay, Leah?
Next up is Coastal Resilience Advisory Committee Third and Fourth Quarter Report.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Leah Hill, the Coastal Resilience Coordinator. Erica, when you're ready, if you can bring that up. So this report is the third and fourth quarter, so from July to December 2024, just to update the committee about the Coastal Resilience Advisory Committee, as well as two ongoing resilience projects. You can go to the next page. Okay, so I'll talk first about the Francis Street Beach Improvement Project. We are finishing up, or we have finished up pre-design, and we're moving towards schematic design. So in April 2025, that part of the planning process should be over, and we'll get 30% design of the preferred alternative. Over the summer, we held a butter and community engagement events. We had over 100 people attend those to give feedback on, you know, initial uses and that sort of stuff of the project site. And then on Monday night, and actually this morning, we had a virtual community event talking about the two different design alternatives and got great feedback from the community. We had over, combined, probably 125 people attend for that meeting. They were identical. They were very interactive, even though it was virtual. So that was great. And we also recorded those, so they're on the project's website, which is www.nantucket-ma.gov/frances. And so if you missed the community event, you can watch the recording. And then we also have a survey, a feedback survey, that should take about five to 10 minutes, just asking about the two different design alternatives. The Washington Street Collaborative Work Group will be meeting next Friday to decide which design to move forward to that 30% design. Next slide. The next resilience project I'm going to give an update about is the Easy Street Flood Mitigation Project. And Arcatis came during the summer to a CRAC meeting and reviewed the risk assessment findings. It developed five concept design alternatives to reduce flooding on Easy Street that considered, you know, design flood elevation, access, feasibility, permitting, all of that stuff. And we also had meetings with the different town departments and community and stakeholder engagement as well. We will have, I think we're aiming for March, mid-March, to have the second virtual open house for this project in particular. Next slide. So this is just a slide showing the engagement that we did for Easy Street. So far, we've met with six to eight different stakeholder groups, and then we had that community open house in the summer. And we'll be doing all of that stakeholder engagement again for the second round in March. Next slide. This is just an overview of the summer downtown resilience planning community open house. So that's where we really showcased both the Easy Street Flood Mitigation Project and the Francis Street Beach Improvement Project. We got great feedback about the format of this for the community. We had two different times that were, you know, exactly the same information, and so people could come and drop in and leave when they pleased. We also had food available and drinks, so that kind of lured some people in. And the community got to talk to different staff members and the different consultant teams as well. So great turnout for that. I want to thank the Whaling Museum for donating their space for us. Next slide. Okay, so now getting into the Coastal Resilience Advisory Committee. Some of the highlights from the third and fourth quarter are that Peter Brace is the chair, the vice chair is Dr. Sarah Boyce, and then we have two co-secretaries, Tim Brain and now Doug Rose. The committee approved, as well as you did, that September was Climate Change Awareness Month for, I think, the fifth year in a row. There was an article written in Yesterday's Island about coastal resilience and the Coastal Resilience Advisory Committee. They had lots of presentations, and then lots of discussions revolving around some suggestions of how to incorporate coastal resiliency into, you know, a potential zoning bylaw update in the future. Next slide. Okay, so we had a presentation from Climate Central, and Climate Central is a policy-neutral nonprofit made up of scientists and communicators who research and report facts about the changing climate. We had this vehicle, it's called the Flood Vision Flood Rover, come to the island, and they drove around the island and took different laser and elevation data and also imagery so they could produce photorealistic flood pictures. I'll show on the next page an example of that. But the real core of doing that is to enhance risk communication, identify threats to evacuation routes and critical facilities, integrate science-based data into municipal plans, and help the media show compelling visuals to communicate risk during an approaching storm, among other examples. So when you talk about sea level rise and coastal flooding and all of that, it's hard to conceptualize what that actually looks like. And so this company actually does that. If you go to the next page. So you can see the picture on the left is Lower Main Street, looking up Main Street. And then the picture on the right is using data from the Massachusetts Coastal Flood Risk Model, which is our best available data for projecting coastal flooding. So they use the MCFRM, the timeframe out to 2050, with a 1% or 100-year storm flood depth. And so what that means is that it's about five feet above the high tide line, and on the road itself, it's about a foot and four inches above the road. So you kind of see, you know, in 2050, at the sea level rise, scenarios stay the same. For a 1%, 100-year storm, we can kind of visualize that this is what could potentially look like in that area. So I've got pictures for all over the island in the public ways, and happy to share more of those if people are interested. Next slide. I gave a presentation about updates on the Coastal Resilience Plan recommendations. I won't go through all of them. They're in the packet, but there are six that are in development, seven that are underway, and seven that are complete or ongoing. So that's about half of the 40 recommendations are either in development, underway, complete, or ongoing. So Erica, you can just flip through the next couple sides. I will say there's a key at the top, so there's a little piece of paper that has some written stuff on it. That key is for a project that's in development. One with the circle with the arrow, that project is underway. And then a check mark means that it's either complete or ongoing. You can just flip through these. It's all the different recommendations within the Coastal Resilience Plan. Okay, that's great. Thank you. We had a wonderful presentation by Shannon Holst. She is a Cape Cod Cooperative Extension and Woods Hole Seegrant Deputy Director and Flood Plane Specialist. She knows everything about flood planes and mapping and building codes, and she gave a great background and helped CRAC kind of all be on the same playing field as far as knowledge with building codes and zoning and flooding, because, you know, there's lots to it. And she also introduced the, which is now a mandatory 2020 model bylaw update that we will have to do. And she, this helped CRAC really develop suggestions to incorporate coastal resiliency into potential zoning bylaw updates. So getting into that, it's a high priority within the CRP to update the zoning bylaw to encourage resilient designs and limit investment in areas of high coastal risk. We had Leslie Snell, Paul Murphy, and Meg Trudell, who's in here, come and explain the zoning bylaw and the Massachusetts Building Code. And then CRAC spent lots of meetings discussing this and coming up with ideas of, you know, things that could be incorporated. They have refined the list, and we will be developing an internal work group to go through that list and see what is possible. Again, this will not be, you know, this is a long process, so it is not coming before town meeting at all this year. The work group will need to start looking at the list and, you know, potentially next year or two years. We'll see how fast it goes. Next slide. We also had Rick Atherton come on to discuss Hold Harmless. So this idea was discussed at several of the CRAC meetings, and CRAC is generally in favor of the concept. Rick explained his 2015, 2019 warrant articles, which ultimately failed at town meeting, but the idea would to have property owners sign a hold harmless agreement to get building permits. It would shift the responsibility to property owners who choose to build in these at-risk areas, and the town wouldn't be responsible to provide, you know, sewer water, et cetera. It's a way to protect the town against the tort law claims arising from climate change developments affecting landowners and residents in risky areas. Next slide. CRAC also gave lots of input into the Nantucket Harbors Action Plan. So this year, in the Harbor Action Plan, there is now going to be a section dedicated to coastal resiliency, which is great. There wasn't one in the prior plan. And some of the, that section will include, you know, background information, objectives, recommendations that are all in line with the Coastal Resilience Plan. So that draft is out. CRAC got to look at it, and overall, you know, great feedback. They also had a, you can go to the next one. Yeah, thank you. They also had a presentation by Arcatis and Vince about the Nantucket Harbor Sediment Transport and Dredge Plan. So for that project, they just, you know, laid out all of the data that they've collected. They showed some really cool models about sediment transportation and currents and speed of currents and all of that. And permitting should, I believe, start in the spring, and then that project will finish up around the fall. Next slide. They also had some discussions about funding mechanisms for coastal resilience projects. So some ideas generated by CRAC are listed up here. I'm not going to go through them all, but we had Town Council John Giorgio come, and he went through the list and, you know, said, explained each one what would have to happen for that to be implemented. And he came, he recommended that we set up a special purpose stabilization fund, supported by an override and potentially a revolver account. But, you know, these all need to get vetted by the Finance Director, and the, CRAC is going to be working on this quarter, a letter to you all, you know, explaining the need of, for these two potential funding mechanisms, really for the construction aspect of these expensive coastal resilience projects. Next slide. We had, we did some lots of public outreach. So again, I post every Thursday on the Natural Resources social media regarding coastal resiliency. There was an article written in Yesterday's Island about CRAC and coastal resiliency in general. There were lots of discussions with Acclimate regarding CRAC's social media campaign. And so Acclimate received funding to create short videos interviewing each CRAC member about coastal resiliency, and that will be shared on NRD on our social media, which is @NRDAK. It'll be shared on Acclimate's social media, which is @AcclimateNantucket. And then if it falls within the town's schedule, it'll be posted on the town Instagram as well. Okay, so this is the last page. Some requests or recommendations from CRAC to you all is they recommend that the select board view the presentation given by Shannon Holst at the October 22nd, 2024 CRAC meeting on flood plane information in relation to the Coastal Resilience Plan. It's very informative. The link's up there. Her presentation starts at about minute eight. They have also recommended to hire professionals to explore funding mechanisms for CRP. That was kind of covered when John Giorgio came to talk about the coastal, the suggestions that CRAC had come up with. And then they request $50,000 to hire grant consultants to be added to the natural resources budget for fiscal year '26 for the purpose of submitting state and federal grants for coastal resiliency. After talking with Libby, this is something that the Coastal Resilience Planning Fund, Coastal Resilience Planning funding from Article 10 could cover. So with that, are there any current or upcoming issues around coastal resiliency that you would like the Coastal Resilience Advisory Committee to look into?
No questions or things to look into, but I really want to acknowledge and appreciate the interdepartmental inner sections of government communication and dialogue that's going on in this process. I think breaking down the silos and really getting ahead of those conversations, how it intersects with planning and building and all of that is really great. And we're doing more of that across town government, but thank you for that. Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions?
From the board, anybody?
Just one was, we've recently, we've got a couple emails about Maticet and Smith Point. Do you know that off the top of your head to just sort of put it out there tonight, or you want to?
I think we need to discuss.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because where we are, basically, just so people know, that there's some of the homeowners there are concerned about the erosion that's happening and want to know where we are and sort of, I've responded and said that, you know, we know it's an issue and we're on it, but I want to make sure that we have a consistent, that we know where we are and we have a consistent answer. answer, so.
Erica?
I just wanted to note too, that multiple people within the town received emails and we are in agreement that we're going to discuss and issue a response.
Yeah.
Yep.
I was going to respond and just make up some stuff, but then I figured that never ends well, so.
We've got more emails.
Yeah.
Yeah, we start with an acknowledgement and a recognition that it's a, it's a upcoming problem.
Yeah.
And pending or a threat, so that we know and we're talking about it.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, well, thank you.
You can thank Matt for putting you on the spot.
Well, she did great.
Okay, moving on to the town manager's report. Libby?
Okay, first up, we have an update on Baxter Road Alternative Access. We have, as you all know, engaged Arcadis to help us develop this alternative access in the, for Baxter Road. And you've had several updates, public updates at board meetings over the last couple of years. And the Sustainability Program Manager and I, Vince, spoke today about this. And there are, I think ultimately what we would like the board to do tonight is endorse the, this is final design, you've seen the design progress over the past two years, but we do need to have a sort of a endpoint with the design so that we can proceed to permitting. And then we have a number of legal issues that we're going to have to sort of evaluate, explore, and get through in order to do this. Because to just put it out there, not every property owner who will be impacted by the alternative access has indicated that they would volunteer easements. Several have, but several have not, and several have said quite the opposite. So we need to wade our way through that. But Bill Casey is on to take us through where we are with the design. Bill?
Can everyone hear me?
Bill, you're, we're not hearing you. It sounds like you're in a tin can.
Any better? The great, that's, that's, that's not in.
That's not better.
Yeah.
Megan wasn't great either earlier. Megan Perry is, we.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
That's better, but you're gonna need, it sounds less echoey, but you're gonna need to speak up, it's not very loud.
Is that any better on this end?
That is 1,000% better.
All right, here we go. Well, that's lucky then, technology adjusted itself. Well, thank you again for having me here tonight. This is a quarterly update, as Libby indicated. You could probably go to the next slide if you will. This is really, we're just going to go through any of the changes that have happened in the design since 90%. I think our last update was in August. And then just kind of walk through a little bit of some of the next items, if you will. These first couple of slides, we could probably just click through. This is our lovely project team, I'm Bill Casey, I'm the project manager for Arcadis. So this is just really framing the neighborhood. Of course, to the north, we've got the Sagittary Head Lighthouse. To the south, it is Bayberry Lane, Sankate Road on the west, and Baxter Road on the east. Next one. So this is just a little bit of a history, if you will. We've kind of had a little bit of an evolution here over the last couple of years, but I'd say in the last, oh, guess, 18 months or so, we've been in a final design phase. We are, as Libby indicated, at the 100% design. We are pretty much ready to put this out on the street whenever the town is ready. We started with some early investigations in 2022. We've gone through a number of wetland surveys, field surveys, topographic. We've done archaeological investigations, we've begun our permitting steps and spoken to a number of regulatory bodies and we can, we can talk about that a little bit. But we are reaching the, the end of this particular phase from a engineering standpoint. As Libby indicated, we do have a little bit of a, I guess, easements to work through and the legality and the financing of this project. Next one. So at the end of last year, we, we submitted our design package, which is now posted on the town website. Also towards the end of last year, we had a, a follow-up on the archaeological survey as the alignment changed for the access point on the northern end of, of the project area. Next. So this gets a little bit more granular, if you will, just to help with some of the colors. The blue is up at Baxter Road, that's indicating a removal of any of the paved surfaces. So at the end of this project, that would be a non-paved surface. That way, should the, should erosion take the bluff, it would not take the pavement into the ocean. Brown is again, non-paved roads or accessways. Over on the left there, that was a walking path up to the lighthouse. Purple is indicating a paved way, which goes down to Sagittary. And the yellow here indicated is potential routes for private owners to connect to the public water and sewer system, which is beneath all of these accessways. Let's go to the next one. I'm sorry, could you go back one? Apologies there. Really, the, the main crux of the changes that happened post 90% design is a realignment of this area. It was really the desire of the golf club to try and maximize the available space of their land, which in turn just shifted this alignment a little bit closer to the property line, which really, we were able to do along a, the northern edge and a little bit on the southern edge. Of course, we do have, you know, turning radius considerations for anything, you know, for large vehicles, particularly emergency vehicles. Go to the next. This is the, the connection point into Sagittary Road. Here, this is all new paved, indicated by the purple. The water and sewer lines run beneath the accessway. Here, we've got a small parking area, which has been relocated a little bit to the, closer to Sagittary. Here, residents or patrons of the lighthouse would park and then walk up to the lighthouse, should there be no other means to get there. The utilities will traverse underneath the purpose bike path, which will also receive a full restoration at the end of the project. Here, we're indicating the, really the middle portion of the project area, where there are two shared driveway accessways. Each one is non-paved. But we'll talk a little bit about this at the next, but each one has, I guess, the one on the left, if you will, will serve, you know, 104, 198, 96 Baxter. And then one on the right will serve 92 and 90 Baxter. Go to the next. And here is more of the connection points, if you will. So the utilities will traverse underneath the bike path. There'll be a connection for water service at the intersection of Sagittary and Bayberry. And then sewer will traverse along Bayberry and discharge to the gravity system up at Baxter Road at a less vulnerable spot. Here, we'll go to the next. So within this project, there's going to be two phases, well, really two points where there are going to be a need for easements to be secured. The first is what's considered a construction easement, which is a temporary easement, you know, allowing a contractor to do their, do their work, essentially install the utilities and accessways. And this is a temporary easement. This type of easement would be dissolved at the end of construction. However, if you go to the next phase, or the next slide, sorry, there will be a number of permanent easements. And what this sketch is trying to relay is that the town will maintain an easement to, it's really a utility easement, it's for maintenance of the main lines. And here, we're showing a five-foot offset of both the water and sewer lines. Now, it'll need to be a, you know, legal document for the town to maintain those. The second type of easement is more of an access easement. There are some instances where one private property will need to traverse across another private property to leave the neighborhood. That would be known more as a permanent easement that would get attached to someone's deed. Here, we've listed the addresses where that would need to occur. Go to the next. This is a cost estimate, construction cost estimate, really total project cost estimate. This work that's been displayed is known as Phase One. The number that is presented is around $24 million. That includes the construction and allowances, if you will, for easement negotiations, legal fees, construction oversights, as well as what it would take as a projection to connect to the system for private ownership. Go to the next. This is a more of a granular schedule, but at a high level, the project will take about two years. Here, we've shown the, the project beginning in 2026. And that would be if it, I believe it's on schedule to be presented at the 2026 town meeting, so a couple, a year from now. Well, yeah, a year from now. And the project is anticipated the last two years. Next slide. This is just a little table that explains the, the permitting effort that is ongoing and has been done to date. Really, the focus of our work, we've got a draft of a conservation commission notice of intent, that's more at the top of our list for submission. We've already spoken to the VIPA office and received a negative determination from that office that we would not need to do any additional filing there. We've followed the NHESP, the Endangered Species Program, and have a few follow-up questions there. We've additionally just filed an amended report to the Mass Historical, Historic Society to just implement a slight change in the alignment at the northern end that we, we discussed a little bit ago. Then we've got water and sewer permits, which would be neat, which would need to be procured a little bit closer to actual connection. This is, I think it was one maybe, one more slide? Well, this is just a little bit of the, the history, if you will, of what would be anticipated in timelines. Where, to the point where we've got 100% design, it's our goal to get through as much permitting as possible this spring. And then it'll become, you know, that shovel-ready document that's available to be implemented once this funding is in need. Next. So this is just a wrap-up slide, so we've got a little bit, really the focus is going to be permitting over the next couple of months, and certainly any other discussions with related to easements.
Thanks, Bill.
Any questions? Thank you.
Any questions from the board comments? Does anyone from the public wish to weigh in on this at this point? I would take questions.
Yeah, my only comment is the price is astronomical. That's the thing that jumped out at me. I'm like, you know, if it's this much for, I don't know how many homes are there, 20? I just.
It might be worth a bit of a, maybe, touch on the cost? And maybe Vince could sort of note what we've been summarized, maybe big picture, the funding. I mean, based on board policy to date, we are actively reviewing the betterment assessment route for funding, which actually, the town would have to come up with the initial funding through an appropriation, and that would most likely be reliant on a debt exclusion, and then the payback would be through betterments. But it's quite obvious that it's a very large price tag and not that many properties. So it, it's going to need some serious review.
So Vince Murphy from the Natural Resource Department, project manager for this alternative access project. What you saw is the combined number for Phase One and Phase Two. Everything you saw for the construction up on screen today, that's just Phase One alone. That would be about $24 million and change. Still a big number. Libby already talked about the idea that this would be done through betterments, the town would have to come up with the capital, do the construction, finish construction, and then at that point, post-construction, my understanding is then at that point, we can charge betterments back to those who benefit from the project. There would have to be a small amount of town retainer in this. We've talked about all kinds of numbers, I'd like a low number, like 5 or 10%, but it might be higher than that, we just don't know because we haven't gotten to that yet. But the remainder of that, we can charge back to those who benefit. So they would have to pay that over the course of about 20 years. Then that's how we'd regain that cost. So there would be, it would end up minimizing the cost to the town. It just looks difficult going to town meeting, looking for $24 million for the capital costs we can do it before we charge it back, because ultimately that means it then lowers the price. This also has to be said, this could be one of the very first candidate coastal resilience district models. And if we could apply it that way to the coastal district modeling, which is very similar to betterments, and it would also include the, the money for operation and maintenance to some extent, though a lot of that would again be charged back to those who benefit. So that would be a lovely way to use CRDs to show and demonstrate to the public how we can do retreat planning of sorts if it is ever needed. It's just one of those nice ways of those who benefit are the ones that pay. Then in terms of the permitting, because I believe there was a question about that too, there's in and around 20 permissions we need. I think we have about 65% as yes. We have a few outright no's, and we have a small number who haven't responded, but have previously been positive on the project. So I think we could probably end up somewhere in the region of about 80, 85% with giving us the permissions we need to go through the permitting process. We need the property owner's permission to undertake the permitting on their property, obvious, but also state requirement. So my bigger question is there's going to be a small number who, we need to try and figure out how to either help them find a way to yes, or if that's never going to happen, as may be the case with some of them, how do we proceed if we can't undertake the permitting? Because they won't give us permission. It gets into a tricky discussion of potential takings.
Vince, have the property owners who stand to benefit weighed in on the idea of betterments? Has that been presented to them yet?
It has been discussed either individually with them or in small groups. I work with them all individually for those that will talk to me, which is about 85% of them, I have regular conversations with, they're all very interested in this project. Can- Can't say that most of them are enthused about the idea of it, but they understand it. They understand the need of it. It, it kind of comes down to a simple idea. And this is kind of how I talk to property owners. Or they sometimes explain to me that this access water and sewer keeps the value of their house. They get to still use their house. They don't have to do much other than change some alignments on their own property for how pipes are going to cross for water and sewer and how they might access a driveway. But they don't have to change their houses. They get to keep their community, they get to keep everything for somebody else doing most of the work, mainly the town in this instance. And then we just charge it back to them.
I'm glad to know that that's been on the table all along and it won't come as a terrible surprise at the end.
I don't quite know how to word this, so I'm just going to say it. It is going to be a surprise to some people. Because even if it's divided among, or some portion of this project is, is assessed to more people, it is a substantial amount of money that we're talking about. Like, I don't even want to say a number, but people could do the math. It, it's, it's a lot. And I'm, there's going to be some pushback. And that's. More pushback.
Historically.
Hang on, Malcolm.
So what would be an average betterment for an individual?
That's the number we haven't worked out. We don't have a number for that yet.
It's going to be substantial.
Cheaper than losing your house in access or having the Board of Health declare it uninhabitable.
Matt?
Yeah, we've, betterments have been, at times have been tricky. We've had people, you know, stand up at town meeting and promise to pay for projects completely themselves. And the town won't have to pay anything. And then when it comes time for that person to do that, it goes to the town and we were going to better it. And then, oh, well, we can't do that. And it just went on the sewer users. So, you know, so it's great if you can, you know, get it and have someone else pay for it. That's kind of the, you know, what people sort of angle for. But I think we have so many expenses upcoming. And I think at some point, some of these, like we're starting to see at Sheep's Pond, sometimes it's not, you, you won't, either won't have a choice or you're going to have a really, people in the community are going to have a really tough decision. Sometimes something's going to be so expensive that we're just going to say we can't do it. You know, if we're going to save two houses for $100 million, are they going to spend $50 million each to, you know, to save a road to two? You know, like, there's going to be a point of where, you know, there's a, you can't do it. And I think that that's why the cost is so important. Because if you, if you don't add the cost, we can save everything. But if you, you know, or we can help everybody. But if you actually have to actually pay it and put the costs in, then I think we start to get, you know, more serious, real conversations about tough choices.
So there's another point in this, if I might, through the chair, obviously. There, there's risks attached with everything. We have two different projects going on in this area. We're getting close to the end of the geotube expansion project. It was heard again this morning at the Conservation Commission. And it's getting very close to being a conclusion. Even if that project is granted, goes through town meeting and gets permitting and licensing, all that kind of stuff. There's been historic issues with the project. We could get that 200 or 500-year storm that'll wipe out the geotubes. You know, there, there's no guarantee that that's the ultimate savior. And one of the things you saw on screen tonight is the Phase One area. There's also the Phase Two area, which would up the cost a little bit more to about the $36 million mark. But that also indicates that we're planning or looking down the road for the Phase Two area that goes much further south of Bayberry. But what my point is, is this whole area is a risk zone. So either we do something to help these people, help this area work through the completion of this design, go through permitting, and then look at the funding once we understand the, the numbers and the breakdowns much better. Or we're going to get sued by each individual.
I mean, I think.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I was just going to say, Vince, on the coastal resiliency districts, even if that was on the warrant this spring and were to pass, and I think it would take a lot of public outreach and, because there were some questions about it, probably, I think mostly because people didn't, weren't aware of it. Because it's, there's 110 articles, et cetera, in, in a given warrant. But even if that were to pass, there's absolutely no way, especially being a novel home rule petition, no other municipality in the Commonwealth has done this. It would not be ready for this timetable. So I'm not saying we shouldn't think about that. But just looking at this, this timetable, it puts us, puts a real-time crunch with that. And I guess that's why you're focusing on the betterments route instead of that.
Partly, yes. But we already have coastal resilience districts as a bylaw and mapping. There's a certain funding element to that, too, in the bylaw. It's not as strong as it would be if we had the home rule petition. That's true. But there's, it's still on the books. It was voted approved at last town meeting. And myself and the team have been working to get the implementation part of that and the mapping part of that in order. And we'll have something in the next few months to be able to present to the board. And then talking about coastal resilience districts in a kind of a more expansive way. We've actually been contacted by some people at state level who are massively interested in this interesting concept. Because the state is also doing a thing called coastal resilience districts, but that's for risk assessment. They're now looking at what we're doing and saying, oh, is that our next step, too? You know, back to the whole environmental leadership thing. Yes, it's new and it's novel. But we're also ahead of the curve and people are looking at us and what we're doing for how we're coming up with novel solutions. And it's everyone. It's, it's how the, the select board treats this and looks at it in a, in a wide way. It's how our consulting teams come in and look at new and unique ways. It's the way that we go through our public engagement, that it's not just a couple of individuals driving it. It's a community-level drive. This has been a very interesting little roller coaster to be on to see how people at the state are now paying attention, contacting us fairly regularly, and wanting to learn how we're doing it so they can work on this as well.
Follow-up, Madam Chair?
Sure.
Vince, what passed at town meeting was the allowance for us to draw the districts, not the funding stream. And I think that's the controversial, and controversial is not the right word, but the, the heavy lift on Beacon Hill.
Correct. So there was, it was primarily mapping, but in the bylaw, there was an element that discussed funding, but it was nowhere near strong enough. You're quite right.
And that's why I advocate for using the existing betterments that are in place and are legal and understood now. And I think it's, you know, that's something we can do. I think the town, you know, will vote the overrides, knowing that some of it's going to be paid back, especially if, you know, we, once, once people understand that we have to get started on this and we can't spend 10 or 15 years on it, you know, on one neighborhood. We can't spend 20 years on one neighborhood and then start the next one. You know, we're getting pressured from Maticat already. And so, you know, so if we, you know, we may have to, you know, we may have to get 85% signed and do takings on 15, you know, and get town meeting to vote and do the, and put the takings in place and keep going. Otherwise, I, I think we're gonna, you know, it's going to be done for us. And I think, and it could be a lot worse. And so, you know, we're trying to do the right thing. And I hope that the public will help us do the right thing. So.
I mean, I think the work that, that Coastal Resilience Advisory Committee has done and the Natural Resources Department in terms of identifying the risks and, and making them feel real to people so that, that folks who are located in risk areas can really start to wrap their heads around if it's coming their way, when it might be coming their way, what the consequences are and what the costs are. Because the community of Nantucket, the taxpayers, will not be able to bear the burden of all of coastal risk. It, it's just not going to happen. So, so those people who are located in those areas, areas really need to start waking up to the fact that there will be costs associated with this. But the point here is that we are providing the expertise to solve this, these problems. And so we're not leaving them on their own. We're, we're preparing solutions, putting numbers to them. And then, I mean, I suppose the community can say no. But I don't, I don't know how, there's a fairness issue here in terms of risk, relative risk, that we just have to get, wrap our heads around collectively. And worse for those who are located in risk areas. So, Malcolm?
Yeah, I'm getting very uncomfortable about all of this. Because I, it's a fairness issue. We should spend this money in this area and then next year at Maticat. And then it's, I'm not sure it will be accepted by the community.
Well, that's the point of betterments, is the people who are directly benefit are paying for it.
I, it's going to be large betterments. I mean, I, I don't feel good about this. There's, this isn't going to be go smoothly.
It's hard.
Anywhere. And we have other big expenses coming down the pike.
Yeah, that's, there's, there's a, there's going to be, if, once we look at it, the places that have more people, it, it's going to help sort it. You know, maybe some, some places is, everyone's going to pay all of it or half of it or some high percentage. But there's also other places where there's a lot of people. So it'll be spread by more, over more. And I think that's where the numbers have to be into the equation. Because that will help lead to the solutions. If you, you know, and so that's, I think it's, we always, not always. We, we, often we have plans and we don't attach the numbers to them. We have something and we're going to do this and it's sort of nebulous. I think.
I can help with that.
Yeah, we're doing, we're trying to put the numbers on this and we're doing it that way.
So everybody does want the numbers. I totally appreciate that. I want them too. But we need to get through permitting first to understand the actual impact each home. So we have the temporary and permanent easements that you saw mapped up there. And that, that'll be, some of those will form the takings and the other, the other aspects of construction and all the costs there. But if, if we try and attach numbers to it now, they're going to change. Because as we go through permitting, the permitting agencies will want to see a change. They'll want to see something go around some tree or wetland or whatever it happens to be. So we can't attach a number to it yet. It is the end goal to do that, but we need to get through permitting first. So maybe that's the next thing that the board should, that's the next part that we're looking at. So that if the board could wait or just allow us to go through the permitting phases, then we can see what the attached numbers for every project would be. It's also been a fact that every time that we've come here and refined the design, the costs and the numbers have come down. Don't forget that in the first phase of the 60% design, we were up over $50 million. And now we're down into the 30s. And for the Phase One alone, in the mid-20s. As we refine this, as the numbers get, as our interpretation and understanding of this gets better, we get to the more real numbers. We're not there yet. So at the other side of permitting, and once we negotiate, the easements, then we'll know. So there are many phases left in this that it would probably be best to let play out so that we can understand where, what the actual costs are going to be.
Yeah, thanks, Vince. Bill, you had your hand up and then you took it down. Did you want to add anything? Oh, we can't hear you again. Well, while you're sorting out, Catherine Ward has her hand up. Erica, if you wouldn't mind, I offered to take public comment. Catherine, you just need to unmute yourself now.
Madam Chair, I'm having trouble. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I sure can. Go ahead.
Thank you for taking my question. And if I am late to this conversation, if you'll just redirect me to who or whom I should speak to after the meeting, I'm happy to. But why does the town have to take on this burden of saving these houses and preserving this shoreline when its nature that's taking its course? And if, like I said, if I'm late to this conversation, then please direct me and I'll take it up with someone offline. Thank you.
Vince, do you want to connect with Ms. Ward?
Yes, I'll happily connect if, I don't know, Erica, if you could message her and get her email address or something through Zoom.
We'll connect you with, with Vince. And he can give you a little more history on the project and why it started and the importance of it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure thing.
I'll make a quick comment is this, there are state rules that require us to, if it's certain type of road, that we have to provide, you know, sort of utilities and, and, and do that. And so that's when I talk about the realities of climate change not matching the state rules. They haven't caught up yet. That's what I mean. So we've got conflicting rules. We, you know, we couldn't just ignore this if we wanted to. You know, we're not allowed to. We'd be sued for not providing, you know, not providing utilities, not providing access. That's our job. And so that's the, you know, that's why we have to do some of this. It isn't that we're picking one area and treating them differently. It's that we've got, we've identified risks in a few areas and we're working on them.
Thanks, Matt. Anything else from the board? Okay, thank you, everybody, for that. What's next, Libby?
Okay, review of the updated draft of the town meeting and election warrant for May 3, 2025. And I, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to pull it up on my computer, too, Erica, because I, yeah. Well, maybe I can see it. So let me just take you through again, like I did last, last week. It won't be as much because not, not too, too much has changed. But I want to point out a few things. So just go through and I will figure out.
Libby, it occurred to me, did you need any action from the board on the last item?
Oh, actually, we did quickly moved on. Do we want an endorsement of where we're at? I think we, we were seeking an endorsement of the design plan.
Yeah, okay.
Make a motion that we endorse it.
Do you have a second?
A second for discussion. Just to add the comment that I know we were all sort of grumbling about the, the numbers, et cetera. But that doesn't negate the vast amount of work that yourself, Vince, Libby, Town Admin has put into this project. So we appreciate it.
Yes, and I just have one question before I vote.
Sure.
For discussion, we're endorsing the plan, not necessarily the cost.
Correct. We're, we're basically giving them permission to keep moving forward.
I'm fine with that. I haven't justified the cost yet.
Yeah, and that includes securing easements as necessary.
Exactly. Thank you.
That haven't been voluntarily given. Okay. So I have a motion and a second by roll call. Matt?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thanks for all the work. Okay, back to the warrant.
Okay. So this, there's nothing here, I don't think.
Can we just go and leave?
Yeah, just, yeah. I think there was a minor thing here. Just wanted to point out that there was a position in the seasonal schedule there, season, called Seasonal Maintenance Supervisor Public Works. We don't need, we haven't used that position in years. It's somehow has gone unnoticed, but we're, we're going to delete that. All right, slow down a tad here. These articles here, these standalone capital articles, which are going to be contingent upon debt exclusions. They are, I, I think I have some information from the Finance Director that I didn't get to today. They, they've been reviewed by Bond Council. And so there might be some very minor, non-substantive wording changes. But the concept is still here. So we've got the Town Employee Housing Feasibility Project. The Public Works Facility Supplemental Appropriation. The Appropriation for Our Island Home. Tom Never's Bike Path. This, I think I may have referenced this last week, but it turns out there's about a six or close to $7 million construction appropriation for the Tom Never's Bike Path, which needs to get in here. It was in the Capital Improvement Plan that Capcom's been reviewing, but it didn't get to me earlier. Okay, keep, keep going a bit. Okay, what was that? Oh, the opioid settlement proceeds appropriation. After some deeper discussion with the Finance Director and Town Council, we do not need that article anymore. So that will come out. Oh, yeah, keep going. Okay, now we start with zoning. So I'm going to turn it to the Director of Planning and the deputy to take you through whatever the board wants to go through with zoning.
So Megan says that she's got.
So Megan says that she's got maps to share, so I'm not sure how we're gonna go back and forth with our screen share.
Well, we start off with all the maps, so I don't think they necessarily need to see the articles. We could just go through the maps. That might be easier. Well, while we're pulling up the maps, Leslie Snell, Director of Planning, have Megan Trudell here with me tonight. She's our senior planner. And I'm gonna go through some of the articles and some that Megan has spent a lot of time working on with some work groups and some other people. She'll go through those. So we have 25 Planning Board-sponsored articles this year. That's a bit more than we had intended to submit. I think you all know we have a lot going on with the master plan and some other initiatives, but there have been some legislative updates that necessitated quite a few of these articles. So we'll get to that. We're gonna start off, well, first I'll let you know that we had our, we have our first hearing scheduled for the Planning Board-sponsored articles on January 29th. We sent courtesy letters out to the affected property owners for zoning map changes in mid-November. Some of those property owners have reached out to our office to talk about the zoning changes. Some have not. So maybe we'll hear from those people at the public hearings. The master plan from 2009, as you know, called for a phase out of quite a few zoning districts. All of our map changes are part of the implementation of that 2009 master plan. Starting off with the first one, it's a change from RC2 to the R5 zoning district. So this is a commercial district going to a residential district. It's two parcels at the corner of Myakomet Avenue and Surfside Road. The next article, also a phase out of the RC2 zoning district. These parcels may go to R5, which is shown in yellow to the south, or perhaps the Commercial Trade and Entrepreneurship District, which is around that in the purple. These property owners have not reached out to us and we're not sure which district the Planning Board will choose, but that will be discussed at the public hearing. Next article, RC2 to R5 or CTEC on Appleton Road. These are three remaining parcels. We've talked with these property owners. These will likely go from the RC2 district to the R5, so going from commercial to residential, which is consistent with the surrounding area. Again, we haven't had the public hearings on these yet. Next article, RC2 to R10 or CN. This is a pocket of remaining RC2 on the east side of Surfside Road. We still have to talk with these property owners about which district they would prefer and the Planning Board still needs to discuss that as well. Next article, RC2 CMI to CTEC 43 Nobodyer Farm Road. This is a single parcel. The property owner had asked for some more time to proceed with permitting, which they've done. So we will talk about which district is most appropriate at the public hearing. The next article, RC2 to CTEC. This is a subdivision that was recently approved by the Planning Board on the north side of Old South Road. The Planning Board discussed with the owner during the public hearing, changing the zoning to CTEC. So this will implement that discussion and they're in agreement with that change. If you're looking in your warrant, there's an article, RC2 to CTEC on Teesdale Circle. The Planning Board's going to withdraw moving forward with that at this town meeting. So we don't have a map for that one. The next article, RC to CN 103 Washington Street. This is sale seafood. That was left out of a prior rezoning in order to give the property owner time to move forward with permitting, which they've done. So we're going to move forward with the CN district on that. The next article, ROH to CDT. This is three properties on North Water Street. It comprises two guest houses, the Periwinkle and the Brass Lantern. Town Meeting has talked about this extension in the past, not in the recent past, and the Planning Board's going to advance that discussion again. R40, whoops, I think I missed one. Oh, it's not in the warrant. Anyway, this is R40 to CN. It's Windmill Auto. It's already used commercially. The other half of the property is already in the CN district. So this would put the entire property that's used commercially in a commercial district. Oh, I think we're missing some maps. Okay, hold on. Let's go back. I think there, okay. One that mean, one that we missed is R40 to ROH, Zero Fair Street. It's a portion of. This property was inadvertently put in the open space district when it's actually residential. It abuts the Fair Street Park. So that's why we're rezoning a portion of that. Okay, now we're onto the open space parcels. There's various parcels. This one's at the corner of Meter Street. It's owned by the land bank. You all may recall that it's been a practice of the Planning Board to put parcels in the Town Overly District in the R40 district if they're used for open space purposes. Next slide. This is a parcel at the corner of Hawthorne Lane and this is owned by the land bank. These next two parcels, there's one on North Road, one on Cathcart Road. Those are owned by the Conservation Foundation and the land bank. This one is on Jefferson Avenue, a recent acquisition by the land bank. And this is on Bartlett Road, owned by the land bank. So those will all be in the, the district we use for open space. So the next articles, there's a series of them. The legislature, legislature recently approved something known as the Affordable Homes Act and it adds a lot of exemptions to Chapter 48, Section 3, which provides statewide exemptions to zoning. So it's not a local opt-in, it's statutory. And whether we make changes to our local bylaw or not, we have to follow what they've adopted for 48, Section 3. So the next few articles are to make changes to our local bylaw to make it conform to what the legislature has approved. So if you want to go through all those, Megan could go through them, or if you want me to just leave it at.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see a flavor of them. If the first ones you just put through, I don't see a lot of problems in any of the first ones. That seemed pretty easy. Yeah, but, you know, give us a flavor of what it's gonna be.
Okay. Megan's been working really closely with Town Council, Amy Quessell, on a lot of these and she's been attending a lot of meetings. So I will let her have an opportunity to speak with you all.
So the, kind of the genesis of.
Megan, just pull the mic closer to you.
Oh, sure. So the intent of a lot of these articles through the state update is surrounds accessory dwelling units. So we had to take a look at how to integrate some of these concepts that are innovative perhaps in other communities into our bylaw that we already are doing a version of it, just a little different. So, excuse me. The first thing is just changing our definition of accessory dwelling unit to, to mirror what the state recommended definition says. And then also reflecting the same in the use chart.
Yeah, Megan, how did, how did the state look, how was the state's version different than our version?
Oh, sure. So our version now, it essentially functions as an in-law suite, if you will. It has to be within a single-family structure. The state's version is a self-contained housing unit and it's on, it's on the same lot as a principal dwelling, which is another term that, that we had to define because there are some nuances that make it different than a primary dwelling. So really, it's just the structure of that. Also, the state allows for multiple of these units by special permit. So we don't have clear guidance on what parameters can be put into place yet. So it's currently put in with the definition for a permit to be issued by the Zoning Board of Appeals to, to comply with that, that section. Whereas now you could just have the one within.
Does the state, sorry, does the state do anything delineate at all by size when they look at it?
Yeah. So it has to be under 900 square feet of gross floor area or half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, whatever's smaller. So it would depend on, on the size of the principal dwelling and how that, that may be configured.
That makes sense. All right, good. Thanks.
And this is separate, just to be clear, than a secondary or tertiary dwelling. It's independent. It's a by right allowance. So there's not gonna be review from the Planning Board. It's gonna be separate from that. It also does not regulate ownership. So it could be condoed out of common ownership. So just for full transparency on that.
And, and this is mandated by the state?
By the state.
So it's in some ways loosening up our current bylaw to comply.
Yep.
And then will a homeowner really have to decide whether they, whether they go, go secondary versus ADU? I mean, ADU's almost closer to our tertiary, really.
It's more similar.
In terms of size and scale, right?
Yep. But it's separate. So you could pursue your prime, in districts that allow this, you could pursue a primary, secondary, tertiary, and an ADU.
Oh, interesting.
It's separate.
Could you, could you, could you pursue more than one ADU?
By special, by special permit only. You could. So, and that, that's part of the, the state's mandate. So they say towns must allow multiple by special permit, but they haven't yet provided great clarity on what those findings to approve or not approve might be.
Tom?
I have a question.
Megan, there's nothing, this may be a silly question, but there's nothing in, if, if an existing unit conformed to the, the new definition of ADU, could that be applied to a unit that already exists to like condo it off, basically?
Yes, it could. Yes, it could. If it otherwise fully complies with this definition. Yes.
And so, one thing to think about, it's not really a question for you, but we now have, we've now got an added development capacity everywhere by leaving primary, secondary, tertiary alone and then complying with the state. So should we, as a community, consider amending the secondary? I mean, our secondary and tertiary was to get ahead of the curve and now the state's caught up, but they've added something not, so we might want to think about amending our secondary, tertiary bylaw to ramp it back down.
I couldn't agree with you more.
Or allow them for year-round occupancy or in the service of year-round homes, but something to think about.
Especially as we kind of figure out how, through the seasonal communities designation, how that can and cannot be applied. I think that's important.
Yeah, a lot of moving parts. Matt, did you?
Yeah, that was, that was kind of what I was gonna say is I think we've, you know, we've already cut two and three dwellings on every lot and they aren't thinking about that. When the state makes its rules, it's because most of the state is single-family houses on one lot. And so I think that that's, yeah.
They still have to meet ground cover and setbacks though. So you can't, you can't require unreasonable restrictions. So you can't single it out and say it, it needs to meet some other ground cover than the underlying zoning district, but it does have to comply with those underlying requirements.
Thanks.
So this just goes on to protected use accessory dwelling unit, just to add further specificity on, on what exactly is protected. Again, this is exactly, this is a direct mirror from the state language. Principal dwelling distinguishing that this is a dwelling that is on the same lot as a protected use ADU. So it's a little bit different than just a primary dwelling. We then are proposing to amend the definition of dwelling unit. It essentially isn't making any substantive changes. It just, as we're going through this process, thought it would be a good idea to, to clean that up to make it match. Year-round housing, this actually comes out of the seasonal communities designation to incorporate that, especially as the trust is, is working on concepts for this. To have that defined in zoning is important. Just some technical changes to the parking calculations out, adding the word unit and then just updating based on where we've updated earlier in the use chart. So it's either not applicable now, I think is the only, the only move. So that is the end of articles related to the Affordable Homes Act. And next we have attainable housing, which is something I worked with Kristy on to include that as a definition. It mirrors the definition that the trust uses. So again, to begin incorporating this into zoning is important. Then we have the cottage community bylaw. Trying to think of what is the most high-level but detailed way to, to explain what this is. So essentially, the cottage community bylaw allows for an increase in unit. It needs to be standalone. It needs to be owner-occupied, but it does not allow an extension in ground cover.
So Megan, would it help me to create a visual? The, the development that Housing Nantucket did across from the schools, right?
Yep.
Might, might, this is what something like a cottage community might look like or Wade cottages or Monomoy Village, right? I'm trying to create a visual image for the community of more units, smaller in size, because we have an extreme shortage of smaller unit houses for homeownership. They're by nature more affordable because of their size and development cost, right?
Yes.
So that's, does that describe the sort of underlying reason for moving this forward?
Exactly. And, you know, our work group that came up with this bylaw really felt that it was important to provide an option that focused on homeownership and year-round versus, you know, rentals and affordability restrictions are very important, but, you know, and totally the group felt like they're, we're missing capturing that, that market as well. So to expand on, on Brooke's point there, they, they cannot exceed three bedrooms. So you could have a studio unit, you can have a one-bedroom unit or a three-bedroom unit. You can't, you can't have units larger than that unless there's a waiver if, if a house existed there prior to the creation of this.
Right. Yeah, I'm, I've talked about cottage colonies for years and I, and I think it's great, but I, and I think there are things we have to look into. Like, is it gonna be everywhere, like town and country areas and all zoning districts, you think a cottage colony will be allowed?
Yep. Any zoning district that currently permits residential uses is being proposed to be allowed.
Are there any considerations for near wetlands areas or impacts on other things? Did you like look at the maps and go through that aspect?
Not directly as it relates to wetlands, but this would have to comply with, with any sort of concom wetland requirements. It would need HDC review. So any of the permit review that any other construction project would require this, this would be required to proceed with that as well.
Yeah, it's, I'm kind of, sorry, I'll go one more thing. It's sort of with the state rule, that's almost, you know, if you're allowed unlimited, we, I don't even know if we need cottage colony. If the state's saying you can do your 900 square feet up to as many as you can fit ground cover wise, isn't that similar to what we're offering?
Well, we have this group that's worked on this article really hard for.
Oh, I'm not saying to throw it out, but I'm saying are they doing the same thing?
Yeah, then the state came forward with, with this legislation. So I, I don't want for them to be viewed as competing because I think there's more flexibility in, in this development. It's looked at more holistically. Site plan review is required. Utilizing a single access point is required. So, you know, I think there's more of a checks and balances, if you will, with this, kind of looking at a site holistically than, than, yeah, than just developing a bunch of ADUs. But, okay. And this is a special permit through the Planning Board. So, you know, we've had some people recently suggest perhaps pursuing a by right option, but the group felt strongly, you know, to make this concept that's very innovative, palatable to the community, you know, that special, that special permit review was important to us.
I'll say I agree that is a testing thing, that we start with, with more oversight and review. And if it works and there's a compelling reason to allow it by right, we can reconsider that down the road.
Yeah, no, I was, I, I think it's good to do it that way. I've been doing it slowly over the years on my employee housing and I've got three, three cottages on one lot now and, you know, sort of, sort of planning it out. One of the other things I would think One of the other things I would think when you're doing the review is think about sort of shared parking areas, because if you can, you know, when I tried to do that, that was difficult, because people couldn't see that, oh, I kept being told, no, you have to have another curb cut onto fairgrounds, and you have to do another one onto rugged road. And I'm like, I don't want another one onto rugged road. I want to have green space. I want the people who live here to have a nice place to live. I don't want them to have cars parked right next to their house all day. And so we, you know, I hope that, and everyone was kind of laughing at me, and my employees were, but then, now that they live there, like, this is great.
Right.
And so I think that there's that kind of review, and, you know, and having it be sensitive to the neighborhood and sensitive to the people living there is kind of the key of getting a cottage colony kind of right, you know? And I've had books I gave away to Ann and, you know, everybody else, but it's really good.
Erica, did you want to?
I just didn't know if you are accepting comments during or after, or?
I think maybe we'll just go article by article if someone, Art, did you want to speak? And Emily, I saw you moving in your chair back there, too. So Megan, if you don't mind entertaining some public questions or comments, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Gus Barrow, I want to raise extreme concern with this article. And while it has a feel-good element to it, the devil is in the details. And I really appreciate the work the planning staff's done. I've been in to see Megan about this. I spoke to the planning board in December just to raise a general concern about what this could result in unintended consequences. And I think the board should really be aware. I'll tell you, as a land surveyor, this is a goldmine of an article. But as a citizen with concern for impact to our community, I really am worried about what this could mean. And I think if you look at specific examples, just one I looked at, there's a couple of vacant lots off of a road, off of South Shore Road, that happened to have a citizen article for sewer this year. Those two lots right now could have six houses under this article, they could have 25. And, you know, you are also going to have a situation that you spur development where folks are going to look at houses that could be ripped down, and rip that one down, and then put up eight more in some of the districts that have especially the higher ground cover, the 12 and 1/2, some of the hour districts. And so one thing I might suggest, if you really want to try it out, would be one district, see how it works, instead of island-wide. And I also just think that with this year, the stuff that has to do with the accessory dwelling units, maybe it's a pause on this. I understand it's going to go through the planning board process, and I will make those concerns. But I think that this board and the community should really be aware of what this could result in. I think that it also really skews any kind of build-out analysis and carrying capacity and the other planning work that's happened. How do you now analyze what the impacts of this article will be from a development perspective? I wouldn't even, you know, know where you would start, because basically, so many things could be, you know, residential redevelopment, if you will. And then on top of that, I believe that none of these actually would count towards the shy list under the 240%. So while there's an affordable housing aspect to it, doesn't necessarily keep us out into safe harbor. And so when you get to the point of where you can't get, we take it back to traffic, congestion, the other impacts on the island, I would hope that this board might send a message to the planning board that perhaps a negative recommendation for this year, work on it, and see how the other ADU-related articles, there's a lot coming in. And I just wanted to make you aware of some of the other side of this. So thank you.
Can I have a quick, just, if you were going to pick one zone, since you are a surveyor, where would you, what zone would you put it in?
I wouldn't want to answer that, right? I think that would take study and with staff. I don't know that I could...
But it's something to think about.
Yeah, I couldn't answer that on the fly. Thanks.
Thanks, Art. Emily?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Emily Molden with the Nantucket Land and Water Council. I also would love to just make a couple comments. I really appreciate the planning staff working on this and bringing it forward. I think it's an example of trying to consider incentivizing different types of housing around the island. I think my concerns, and some that I've heard from a number of other community members, are somewhat in align with what you just heard from Mr. Gus Barrow. One of the concerns that I think I briefly raised with the planning board last month as well was thinking more about some of those areas outside of town. For example, an oversized lug two or lug three lot that's right on the harbor, and maybe from a financial perspective, it wouldn't make sense to go this route now, but it would potentially open the door for a drastically larger number of lots and bedrooms in an area where maybe we don't have the utilities and services for them. So I'm a little bit concerned about some implications to some of our resources outside of town. As far as inside of town goes, I think I also would raise the question about how we anticipate as a community, what the implications of this additional development would be on our infrastructure and our services, as far as sewer capacity and water. And I think it makes sense to start smaller, where we can kind of calculate what the implications would be, and see how it goes, and then go from there. But I'm concerned that this is trying to do too much too soon as well.
So when you say smaller, what would you mean by that?
Well, I think the idea of starting not with like all of the districts, but maybe looking at, and again, I don't have a specific one in mind at the moment. I think that it should be looked at a little more carefully, and I know the folks at planning could kind of do some of those calculations, but I feel like we should do it at a pace where we can kind of calculate what the impacts on our infrastructure will be, and move concurrent with that.
Okay. Thanks, Emily. Any thoughts, Megan? You don't have to respond.
No, it's okay. I can just say one thought. I wasn't, you know, prepared for a debate or anything.
No, no, no. No, no, no.
But just keep into consideration on larger lots, the lug districts in particular, you know, they have very strict septic and well requirements they need to comply with. So, you know, if you're allowed 18 bedrooms today, you'll be allowed 18 bedrooms under this bylaw. So it really is not allowing an increase of density in that sense. It's just, you know, providing alternative options for homeownership. And just as a reminder, the planning board public hearing on this is scheduled for actually the 23rd, 4:00 p.m., so that's next Thursday.
I guess for those hearings, or for Willoughby, do you have some estimates on the impacts of development? Do you have any sort of ballparks of what this could do? You know, what it'll do to utilities and development and that type of thing?
So I think why, you know, and I actually said this to Leslie before we came here tonight in preparation for this meeting, that I really think I should provide a visual on the zoning districts. So, you know, one per 1,250 might seem scary or not sound like anything to somebody, but what that means is that equates to one additional unit. So, you know, maybe having it more in that sort of visual would be helpful for people to understand what exactly could happen.
Yeah, I think that analysis will be really helpful for the hearing. Erica?
I just want to make a comment as a citizen.
Sure.
Erica Mooney. I just wanted to know that some of the examples of like cottage community areas, like Wade cottages, and Seven Surfside, and Montemoy Village, those are all on public roadways. They all have access to public bike paths and sidewalks. They all have access to mostly public water, public sewer. So just pointing that out.
Thanks, Erica. Okay.
So are we good on cottage communities, or does?
I feel, does anyone else have any other questions about the cottage community? Tom?
I guess I just have one clarification, Megan. So the first definition from the Affordable Homes Act is an acceptance of MGL, basically. And then the new proposed bylaw that planning board has come up, and the work group, as you said, would those regulations that are in that, I'm trying to get, if one passes, if one doesn't pass, how that's, we need to accept the first one, basically.
You have to. So even if Town Meeting doesn't accept it, it's state law, so we can't, we can't, you know, in practice, be in conflict with that.
Okay. So for members of the public, that is already a done deal?
Yes.
Okay. So it's really the action, potential action for Town Meeting is what the will of Town Meeting, okay. Okay, thank you.
So I'm going to restate. Basically, what we're doing is bringing the language of our bylaw into compliance with what we have to do anyway, to make it less confusing to anyone who's looking at the bylaw and wondering what they're allowed to do.
Yes, for the ADUs. Yep. Thanks.
Madam Chair, but as this bylaw, I agree with the speakers. I'm not comfortable with it yet. I think the unintended consequences have not really been worked out, and I'd like to have a little more data, a little more discussion. I'm not ready to support it.
Okay. So the action this board would have to take would be to adopt the warrant without it if we don't think it's ready, or we want to delay for more information. Just, we don't need to do that tonight, but tomorrow, next week, we will have to do that. So, and that planning board hearing is after we adopt the warrant, so.
And I want to remind everyone, too, through the planning board motion, they can make any recommendation that's within the scope that's less restrictive. So if they wanted to, you know, provide for less density allowances, or restrict certain districts that are written in here, if that, you know, is something that progresses through the conversation of the public hearings, and if that's the will of the board, that would be within the scope of something they could do in their motion throughout that process.
Okay. So what I would say, Megan, is if you're going to prepare something along the lines of some analysis, if it's possible, maybe for you to come back next Wednesday and present that to us before we adopt the warrant.
Okay, certainly.
Just to make sure the board's comfortable.
Is that, sure. Sound good?
Okay, thank you. We appreciate that. Libby?
I was just going to mention, you also could comment.
Great. We can comment as well. Yep, okay.
The other part that's interesting is, you know, if the state hadn't just done what it's done, we might, you know, we might be saying, gee whiz, we should pause. But with the state having done what it's done, all the things we're talking about, it sounds like could happen anyway. And it sounds like the answer is going to be something more like what Brooke was talking about. If we don't want three or four dwellings, we have to change existing things that we are allowed to change. We can't change that, if I got this right. Yeah, so, you know, I think we've got a big, you know, that's the big issue. If we're concerned about multiple units everywhere, then we really need to tighten our belts on some things. Wow, okay.
Well, and for me, as a policy, multiple units that are deed-restricted for year-round occupancy is a goal, rather than just multiple units. So there may be an opportunity to reassess the secondary and tertiary bylaw to tighten up year-round occupancy as it relates to all of this. I mean, I think it's part of a bigger conversation about making sure we set aside enough year-round deed-restricted units across the island.
And maybe in areas that are serviced, that, you know, have the services and the capacity to handle it. So I think that's going to be, yeah, it's interesting. All right.
I think Dawn has her hand up.
I was just going to say, just to add to that, I'd also like to see some conversation on how number of parking spaces will be reviewed, because I do see that there could be a little bit more issue if more units are split out, even if it's the same number of bedrooms. You just may end up having more double occupancy in like a one-bedroom. And one thing that they did do at Seven Surfside is they limited each unit to one parking space. So just something to think about. And another reason why it definitely makes more sense to have more units where they're serviced by bus service, bike paths, and so forth.
So something to consider, having it in zones that are served by utilities and transportation.
Yep. And as it's currently drafted, it's not putting parking calculations in the parking chart, because it's, there wasn't a good fit between single-family homes and apartments. So what is being proposed is two- and three-bedroom units will require a minimum of two spaces per unit, and the one-bedroom unit and studio units would require one per unit.
Okay. What's next?
So next is the inclusionary housing bylaw. I'm just going to give a higher level overview of this. You may remember this came forward as a citizen-sponsored petition, I think at special Town Meeting. So we've worked with the article sponsor to address all of the community concerns we heard, at least through that process. So we've eliminated a commercial component. We've eliminated any sort of confusion on how this applies to by-right subdivision. There's court cases that are very clear that you cannot require inclusionary housing when you're subdividing by right. So we clarified all of that through this update. But really, the big update was eliminating that commercial MCD component. Our existing MCD bylaw does have a provision where the planning board can require inclusionary units with a very specific calculation of what can be required. And I can't speak to what has been past, past practice, but in recent past, either the applicant has been forthcoming with inclusionary units for their own employees, or year-round housing, or the planning board has required that of them. So the next article has come out of a lot of feedback, actually, we've been hearing mostly from HDC meetings, and it's a prohibition of pickleball courts islandwide. So right now, we've inserted pickleball into the use chart and have prohibited it in all zoning districts.
Matt knew I had to comment on this. So I guess my question on this is, so pickleball is not just played on pickleball courts. It's played on sport courts, which are the plastic tiles that go over. And so my question would be, and maybe this is an offline conversation or something, but is that considered a pickleball court? Is it, I know it's the noise that's the problem. How does enforcement, where I, this gets into some stuff, which I just have some questions about, so.
Okay. I think we should chat offline, and I think I should take in your feedback. So really, I think the intent of this article is the planning board, as a regulatory board, is hearing the community, and this is really going to spark a conversation on, you know, if or how this may be controlled through zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
If you could design a silent pickleball ball, you would be buying a house on, you know, on El Pointer, Halbert Ave. It's a huge problem everywhere.
No, I acknowledge that. And I know these issues are coming up for a reason. I just think there's some, there's some bigger questions that are tied in it that I, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
But the pickleball players like, well, a lot of them like the noise. It's the neighbors that don't.
Imagine setting that on like a sleep sound machine. So the next thing we have is some updates to solar. This is really meant to clarify what isn't allowed. It inserts ground-mounted solar as an exclusion and ground cover, but also inserts it in the definition of structure, so it clarifies that ground-mounted solar does need to comply with setbacks. This also adds some clarifying definitions. So we have the solar photovoltaic system, grid-connected solar energy system, and then also defining roof-mounted solar and ground-mounted solar as an accessory use only. And then as a follow-up to those definitions, it's proposing to insert ground-mounted solar into the use chart as an accessory use only in all zoning districts, and then roof-mounted solar as allowable in all zoning districts. So what this does not do, just to be clear, it does not allow solar, ground-mounted solar as a primary use anywhere other than where it's currently allowed, which is the overlay out by the dump. The next series of articles are just simple technical amendments. Last Town Meeting, we changed the permit granting authority from the planning board to the zoning boards of appeals from Morelands Management. Unfortunately, we missed a couple carryover spots in that section of the bylaw, so that needs to be updated to reflect that the ZBA is the permit granting authority. There's some language in secondary dwelling that seems to be a cut-and-paste error that happened somewhere along the lines, inserting a portion of the ground cover definition. So we're proposing to eliminate that, just keep it a little less confusing. And then this one, Leslie, the elimination, yeah, can you talk about that one?
Okay, so this last one is super technical. It's eliminating the temporary moratorium on recreational marijuana establishments. This actually expired in December of 2018. Town Meeting had voted to put in this temporary moratorium years ago while we were figuring out what we wanted to do permanently. We now have permanent regulations and permanent bylaw requirements for medical marijuana and recreational marijuana. So we no longer need this in the bylaw, it's just taking up space. All right. Any other questions about any of the zoning? Anybody? And Megan did a great job. I didn't know she was going to take over the whole time, so. And Megan did a great job, I didn't know she was going to take over the whole time, so.
Yeah, thanks, thanks to you both, that was really helpful. And some side conversations this week, and we'll finalize. Do we want to talk about car rental agencies next, I think? Sidebar.
Wait, am I going right to the?
Well, go, just keep going past, keep going past zoning.
Brooke, when we get to car rentals, you have to tell people that you don't rent your car. Because I've had three or four people tell me, how can she be sitting on it, so.
I'll say that right now. Last week, I was trying to create an example, and I said, I rent my car. And it was meant as an example. I do not rent my car through Turo. Or any other peer-to-peer, or any other. It was misunderstood by the public, so.
Yeah, I've corrected a few of them.
Wait, are we doing any of the?
No, keep, keep going. Okay, so now we're back into general bylaw, so just keep slowly scrolling. There's nothing there. Keep going. Okay, so the car rental bylaw. As I mentioned last week, what's in the warrant right now, the draft, is the exact article that was in the 2024 warrant that didn't pass. There are two other potential options, which are very open for your changing around or questioning, that were attachments in the packet. And I don't know which one you want to look at. One is supposed to limit peer-to-peer car sharing, the other does not. And I think we have Brian Riley from Town Council's office on to, I don't know if you want him to re-explain the differences, or maybe everybody remembers.
So let me just poll the board on direction, so maybe we start. Your sense of, as it stands now, the bylaw seems to, the definition of a car rental seems to include peer-to-peer car sharing in the bylaw. We are, we are now establishing, or looking to establish, a policy which will sort of clearly define peer-to-peer car sharing in our bylaw and set a policy for regulating it, not regulating it, allow it, not allowing it. And so I'd be curious if there is, you know, we have sort of three options to look at. Should we start with the one that exempts peer-to-peer from the bylaw and thus allows it outside of the definition of car rental, and therefore not needing medallions, et cetera? Or do you want to look at versions that define peer-to-peer as car rental and therefore being included as such in the bylaw and subject to some regulation? Does that question make sense, Matt?
Yeah, I'm a little worried. We've got to clean up on rental agency by saying that a rental agency is a person, business, or corporation in the town of Nantucket, the thing I read earlier today, in the business of renting, leasing, or keeping for rent any motor vehicle. And then that it says, "from or in a fixed location operating in a commercially zoned location."
Okay, so.
What is that, what is that one?
Before we get in the details, what I'm trying to get a sense of is, what direction is the board leaning in terms of where we should focus in talking about the details?
Well, you know where I, you know.
I know where you stand, I guess.
I stand, I believe that they are not legal now. I believe that our definition, you know, it has them as illegal now. And I believe that they should be, we should find a way, like you suggested last week, to put them under the cap. And I think even some of the rental car companies that didn't use their, you know, use their medallions would, you know, or would be somewhat amenable to some of those medallions going to that use, as opposed to, you know, adding more. You know, so I think that there's a, so that, so, yeah, so yes, you're saying, where do I stand? I think that they should be allowed within the cap, you know.
They should be considered car rentals and subject to the cap and the medallion system, okay.
Yes.
Malcolm?
Yes, Madam Chair, first of all, the fact there's unused medallions is totally unacceptable. Totally unacceptable. I've thought a lot about this. I want to hear a good argument why peer-to-peer should be exempt. If I can't have a good argument of why they should be exempt, then I agree with Matt.
Okay, Tom?
I'd be interested in hearing that argument, if anybody has it.
Okay, Dawn, did you want to weigh in?
Same, I'd like to hear a better argument for why it should be exempt. But I think it's really important, it's really important to me to get back any unused medallions and get a path to allow these to be car rentals and to be legal. And then I also have some concerns with if people have more than one, that they definitely have a proper parking location that's commercial.
Okay, so it sounds to me that we should, that we're, we're, I guess, maybe Mr. Cohen is the person to speak on the argument for exempting peer-to-peer car rentals from the bylaw, because that is the position that he took with us last week, so. So let's hear from Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I hope that I can exactly make the points that you're interested in hearing. I have four points to make. The first is, peer-to-peer car sharing, or car rental, does not increase the number of cars on Nantucket. In fact, it lowers them, okay? There are currently cars that are being, there are on Nantucket already that are just being rented out, and those cars are not additional cars. If those cars were not available, then people historically have just rented cars or brought over their own cars. There are zero people who want to have a car in Nantucket who don't have one. So it's a matter of, are we telling people you can use peer-to-peer car sharing of a car that comes here and stays over? Or are we telling people you need to rent it or bring your own car over, which just ties up the, you know, the steamship more? But again, there are zero people. If anybody thinks that the 50,000, 60,000 people that come to Nantucket every summer are using 500 rental cars, I mean, no one thinks that. No one thinks that 50,000 people are using 500 rental cars. Obviously, they're bringing over cars, they're renting cars, or otherwise. So this is not going to increase cars, it's going to limit them. That's my first point. My second point is that treating people who do peer-to-peer car rentals the same as a car rental agency doesn't really make any sense. People who do peer-to-peer are Nantucket residents who are trying to make some extra money, because it's really expensive to live here. And they use that money to pay for braces, to pay for sports, to pay for vacations, just to pay for the high cost of living on Nantucket, right? Peer-to-peer car rental is one of the only semi-passive ways you can have second income without having to work an actual second job. So it's an extremely family-friendly business to be in, but it's not a commercial activity. Nothing takes place on-site, except maybe cleaning the cars. It's not disturbing the neighborhood the way renting your house might have more noise or whatever. You know, it's just car, and most of the time, the cars are not there. Most of the time, they're at other locations. As opposed to that, when you have a car rental agency, those cars are all parked out in the airport, as opposed to throughout town. Those vehicles are owned by companies that don't pay sales tax. When they buy the cars, they don't pay excise tax to the community for having those cars, and they have all kinds of benefits. Treating, treating, you know, in the same way that the town doesn't treat Uber and Lyft, the same way it treats taxis, it shouldn't be treating peer-to-peer car rental the same way it treats car rental agencies. It's just a, it's a totally different thing. The third, my third point is that the town currently has no reason to regulate this. There's no problems, okay? And it would cost a lot of money, of town time and town resources, probably the police department, if not new, some, you know, overburdened town agency to start getting into heavy regulation of this. And nobody has suggested that there's a need for it yet. So I think that, you know, over-regulating is just going to be a burden on the town. In fact, there are no towns, zero, absolutely zero towns in the United States, the whole country, that regulate peer-to-peer car sharing. There are several states that regulate peer-to-peer car sharing, but no, and Massachusetts has a bill currently pending to regulate peer-to-peer car sharing. And I think Nantucket should wait and see what happens with that bill, instead of being the first and only town to get into this business. Every other town has let the state go first. There's just no reason to do this. Now, there has been some suggestions that the town, or that the airport is losing money. That actually is currently true. But if Turo, Turo has 145 agreements with different airports of all sizes, large, small, rural, not rural, whatever, 145 airports all over the country, where Turo actually collects the fee for the, has an agreement with the airport, and then collects that fee from the customer and pays it over to the airport. So the airport, and it has rules. And if people don't follow the rules for the airport, like parking or deliveries or whatever, they would then get banned from Turo or get banned from doing airport, you know, related stuff. So the airport would be able to make money instantly, and Turo would take on the burden for that. There wouldn't have to be any, you know, going out there and gotcha, you know, burden on the airport to deal with it. So I think that, you know, the airport would be fine with this. Obviously, that's a separate conversation we've had, but that's something that, that would be a next step. The, my recommendation to the town, yeah, the other thing is that, you know, the medallion system right now is a mess. You've got national car companies that don't have, you know, are not locally owned, that are abusing the system and withholding these medallions. But if you try and take them away, you're going to end up with lawsuits, all kinds of problems. It could take, you know, years to resolve the medallion system. And right now, the town only has eight medallions available, which obviously isn't enough. I think, I very strongly think that the best thing for the town to do is to exempt peer-to-peer car rental from the car agency definition, because it's totally separate, and then just adopt a separate rule, which I don't even think you need a town meeting bylaw to do it, but if you do, you could put one in that would require that someone register and pay a fee with the town. And if you wanted to, you could have stickers on the cars that would make it easily identifiable to the police department, to whoever, you know, if you want to see where these cars are, who owns them, you know, are they residents, how many do they have? You know, collect that information before you start regulating. And I think the town would then be really easy in a position, after it collects some information and does some more, now, some review of whether or not it's worth spending town and time money on that problem, whether there is a problem or not. It could easily put limits in place, it could put regulations in place. And I'm not recommending that it should, but I'm saying it easily can down the line should be entirely separate from the car rentals, which are totally different. So that's my recommendation, thank you.
Okay, terrific, thank you very much. Kathy Baird's hands up, I'm going to take her comment, and then Art, I think, is going to speak about the airport for a second for us.
I'm really sorry, I had really put my hand up so that I could speak about something that got skipped over. Just really ask a process question, so it's not related to this particular article. So I don't know how you'd like to proceed, given that.
Related to the, related to the warrant, Kathy?
Yes, it was related to the warrant, and it was one of the. Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, this is really quick, it's a process question. On the citizens' warrant articles that are not acceptable as to form, I wondered how they were handled, I'm just confused about it. So for example, there's an STR article that's down in the zoning, in the general bylaw area, and Town Council had written a comment that it was, did not belong, was not acceptable as to form. So I don't see it being in front of the planning board, even though the recommendation was that it be moved to the planning board. So I just wondered what was, how that works, since the warrant contains the article as a general bylaw, and it does not appear that the planning board will consider it for a recommendation. What would be the next steps?
Which, which specific article?
I mean, that was, I think it's Patricia, Patricia Wright.
Okay, terrific, let me ask, let me have Town Council comment on what will happen with that article.
Yeah, so the specific question is, what will happen? What are the options open to the sponsor, the town, and/or the voters?
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Giorgio?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the, all of these articles are going to be vetted by the Finance Committee, which is going to make a recommendation as to each one of the petitioned articles. And in particular, if they are general bylaw amendments, they routinely do not go to the planning board for a public hearing. There's no public hearing required. So the, the practice in town has been, let's assume for a moment that, based upon some comment or opinion that we've provided, that the Finance Committee moves to take no action. The moderator always gives the proponent of the article the opportunity to make a positive motion, which they can certainly do. It doesn't change any legal concerns. And whether or not the article can actually be implemented, if it's a bylaw, it has to go to the Attorney General for approval. And so that whole process would play out, assuming that town meeting accepted a positive motion, you know, passed the article, and then it goes on to the next level of review.
Okay, thank you, John. Sorry for the digression, everybody. Art, did you want to comment on Turo and the airport?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I hadn't planned, I think I sparred, chairman of the Airport Commission, but just in response to Mr. Cohen's comments, and I did watch your last meeting on this, and, you know, the airport is aware of the issue and has had past discussions related to peer-to-peer car sharing. And I don't think it would be accurate to say the airport would be fine with it. I'm not here to represent a specific position of the Airport Commission. We could put it on a future agenda as may be needed. Though I would say that my sense is in line with some of your discussion last week and tonight, where you have a medallion system, and that to operate under that regulated climate would better serve the public, as well as be most likely in the better interest of the airport. I think it's also important to remember that a significant portion, you know, tenants of the airport are the car rental agencies. We have relationships with, long-term relationships with them, they've served our community well. And I believe that they should be considered, as well as a limited entry to market with the peer-to-peer networking, which, using your existing cap, I think that Mr. Fee was on point with respect to, while Mr. Cohen states, you know, that this doesn't exist elsewhere, Nantucket isn't anywhere else, and that back in the day, if you will, when the cap was established, it was with recognition to the limited size of our roads and infrastructure. And I think that clearly, there's been a lot of discussion in the last few years about a need for better oversight and management of that licensing process and the medallions, and cleaning that up and how you do that. And perhaps as part of this, there's a slight increase of some amount in that, in that cap as part of that, or you always could do that in the next year, you always have that authority. You could, you could start up with a cleanup. But my, my general sense would be that, you know, the interest would be under that managed market. And then if I could just, I guess, take off, because I don't want to speak, my hat as the chairman of the Airport Commission, generally speaking, you know, as a citizen. as the, uh, Chairman of the Airport Commission, generally speaking, uh, you know, as a citizen, um, my general philosophy is anti-regulation, but I think the time that we need regulation is when there's a chance for private interests to have a negative impact on the public good. And I think that's exactly what happens here. I don't agree with Mr. Cohen's comments that this is just somebody making some money to buy braces. There are folks, as you saw from that list last year and that spreadsheet, that own several of these vehicles. Are they being stored and parked on our roads and people are profiting excessively and creating the adjus- additional congestion? And I think there's a public good that needs to be considered that could be properly managed through, perhaps you increase some of the fees to cover that, uh, management or additional licensing age, whatever you have to do. But I, my sense is that would be the, the way to go with this. Thank you.
Thanks, Art. Okay, questions, comments from the board on this direction? Do we want to?
How many unused medallions are there?
Jody Casper's hand is up. I'm gonna... Okay, so I'm gonna have Amy answer the question about how many unused medallions there are since that was just asked and then Jody, I'll let you. Amy?
Yes, thank you. Do you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So, um, historically, I'll just give you an average. Obviously, Hertz is the, the agency that consistently has unused medallions. Um, I believe in 2024, I don't have the exact number, it was over, uh, 120. So we average, if I look back at the average the past 10 years, it averages about 100 unused medallions per year. Um, uh, as I had mentioned before, we previously, uh, as you know, if it's, car is not registered on Nantucket, it pays $100 per medallion, no fee. If the car is registered on Nantucket, for years, they did pay for each unused medallion. We stopped that a couple of years ago, noticing that it just wasn't written anywhere. Um, and they are supposed to, uh, include a registration to receive a medallion and to pay for it if it's not registered on Nantucket. So, um, you know, we provided a, a list over the years, each year, but it averages 100.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, so that's about the number that Mr. Cohen said are peer-to-peer rentals.
Okay.
Close.
Okay, so that said, um, uh, Chief Casper, did you want to add?
Thank you. I just wanted to echo a, a little bit of what, uh, Mr. Cohen said regarding the enforcement component. And of course, the times that we're going to see the biggest, uh, activity when it comes to these car rentals are going to be in the summertime when our staff and everyone here is the most, uh, overtasked with responsibilities. This is a complicated enforcement challenge. It would be for us to be tracking people down, we'd be looking on sites online, trying to find cars and seeing if they're going out, when they're rented. That would take some, um, effort and energy, which likely if that was laid with the police department, would end up in me requesting some sort of per diem or seasonal position, um, someone that could be dedicated to this and work on it. So I just want to put that before the board as you contemplate this, that we probably don't have the ability right now to, um, engage in this type of enforcement during our busiest months. I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
All right, just a, had a little quick note.
Just, just identify yourself, full name for the record.
Yeah, my name is Jonathan Rodriguez, uh, the owner of Rodriguez Laundry. Been on Nantucket, uh, for multiple years. Been a personal trainer for 20 something years. Sure, you guys know me. So I just wanted to say that, um, let me read something here. For several years, I've worked on Nantucket, as you guys know, as, as a personal trainer. I'm now proud owner of Rodriguez Laundry. Additionally, I'm one of the brothers of four that you guys probably know. I'm also a twin, uh, so don't confuse me. Um, as a member of the Turo family, I have been providing cars and guests, to guests who visit our island, whether they're here for vacation or just on a simple, uh, day trip, uh, to Nantucket. They're either coming to visit or they're coming to, to visit family. Turo has placed a significant role in helping me and my family generate additional sources of income, which has been crucial to me and my, and the financial demands of living on the island. Uh, Nantucket's unique charm draws visitors from all over, um, and transportation is sometimes tough for people that either can't rent a car fast enough or if they're coming here in advance, Turo has provided the service of having the opportunity to rent the car in advance before they come to the island so they're not paying, uh, big bucks for renting a vehicle. But anyways, Turo has been valuable to me and to my family and it's had also been convenient to move, um, around also on Nantucket. The service is not just benefit to the visitors, it has a, a beneficial part of being able to make a little bit of money, uh, that's not through working an eight-hour shift or a 12-hour shift in a job. We're renting the cars out to someone that comes and visit legally. I know you guys call it kind of illegal, but it's through an app that has the sources to put, um, something together that provides insurance and it covers the person if they get into an accident or covers a liability for some situation that might happen on the island. And I just wanted to show my support for Turo and I'm thankful for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
My name's Tim Mahoney. I'm from Affordable Rentals in Nantucket. I'm a resident and a year-round, um, year-round business person here. I live, uh, on Sellsure Road. I have some questions about Mr. Cohen's perception of what Turo does. He says that it does not increase the cars. Mr. Rodriguez doesn't rent his personal car and walk. He probably has additional cars. Mr. Rodriguez, not the problem.
So, yeah, okay.
The people that have six, eight cars, they're here for the summer, they're renting some up to 19 cars. They're leaving them in the stop and shop, they're cleaning them in front of Ralph Lauren, they're, they're dropping them off in the line to pick up the boats. The police know about it. It's not, it's, you don't need a sting. They see these cars on the road. Great Point knows about it. The beach permits at Great Point are able to decipher. The town could decipher as well. Let's see. Uh, it's not a commercial activity to rent a car other than washing. There's also servicing. These guys with multiple cars have staff. They're running two cars in to drop one off and one out. They're parking them wherever they can find a spot. They don't have an office, they don't pay, they don't have commercial space. It's, it's, I'd question that. Uh, Mr. Cohen says that we don't pay sales tax or exercise tax. I wish that was true. That's completely untrue. Let's see. Well, it was Ms. Casper, uh, Chief Caspers, pardon me. I think her staff know what's a Turo and what's a rental and what's a resident, what's a commercial car. I don't think they should run a sting. I don't think they have the bandwidth. But if a car got pulled over that went through a stop sign and it wasn't registered to that person, that car should be identified as a car without a medallion, um, if it's, if it's being rented as a Turo, especially if it's breaking the law. Those are kind of the, the quick ones that just go to Mr. Cohen. But there are definitely more cars, more Turos in the summer than in the winter. They're seasonal, they're on the boat going back and forth. There isn't a, I have cars available 48 weeks a year. There's four weeks when we need those Turos. The least on the road is the only time that a lot of those cars are getting rented. And there's, if Mr. Cohen has 150 people that rent Turos, he doesn't say how many vehicles he represents. Anyone with more than one vehicle, they're not one car pe- uh, companies. There's a lot of them with two and more. So I'd like to, um, I'd like to know what he has to say, um, as far as the, the, the details of that.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, direction from the board, um, in terms of where we want to go, what we want to accomplish, and then maybe the details of the language need to be ironed out by, uh, council, but what's, what's, what are, what are our goals? Can we agree on goals?
Okay.
I was just going to see if, if John Giorgio had any thoughts on this as town council.
Uh, Mr. Riley's on too. He's been doing most of the language on this.
Or Attorney Riley.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, these guys aren't determining policy, they're determining how to write the law to comply with the policy you want.
Like many things, both sides had very good arguments. So what's kind of stuck me here is those individual people that are essentially running more than one car or several cars, their, their commercial operations. Now Jonathan, if he rents one car, I have no problem with that. So I'm trying to figure out in my mind how you differentiate the two. Does that mean we take a year and make sure all the peer-to-peer cars are registered? Just registered, period, with stickers and get some count? So we could see that, you know, Mr. Smith has 20 of them and Mr. Rodriguez has one? And make a better decision later on? It's a possibility.
Yeah, I, I, I think that they are businesses. I think, I don't believe, as our, as it's written now, they're not allowed. I think there should be a path to, you know, to, to some underneath our cap. Uh, I get very worried about waiting any longer. I was worried about this three years ago and there was probably, you know, 50 or 20 or 50, and now who knows how many we have. I think, it, it is similar to Uber and Lyft, and I don't think we can wait for the state because what the, what the venture funds do that fund these is they plow a ton of money in, they grow it big enough, they lose money for years, but they grow it big enough that they can then, uh, influence the state, city and state politicians and, and to allow them to continue to do it. So they undercut, you know, another business and, and they find a way, they undercut cabs and they find a way around the rules and regulations and they get big enough, fast enough, they can do it. And I think that we are fortunate that we have the rules in place that we have. And I think we have a system in place that will work for, you know, 100, 150 of these, you know? And I, you know, if we take back the 140 and we have eight, you know, we have the ability to do that. One of the arguments I found interesting, uh, with Mr. Cohen is he started out saying the staff didn't have the wherewithal, the bandwidth to do it and the wherewithal to do it, but he ended with, you know, allow this to be peer-to-peer, to be exempted and be allowed, and then you can count them all and then if you have to, you can do it. Well, that, that's, you know, it reminds me of the argument we heard from the marijuana companies, you know, when they all wanted to come in and have five, six, seven of them. And what we did very intelligently then was we put some zoning in place and we said, let's, you know, let's not open the barn door and then try to close it, let's open it slowly. And so I, and I think that that has really worked. If we had had five or six marijuana places here, I don't think any of them would have survived and they would have been, you know, there would have been some bad things that were happening between them and competition. I think that we ended up, by being careful, we ended up with a really good situation for those businesses that are doing fine, you know, would be, you know, so, so I think that this is, in my mind, this is similar to that. You know, I think that we should be careful and not exempt it. One question I have for town council is there's a, uh, one of the word, the wording that we're, uh, offering for the rental agency definition is adding from or in a fixed location, operating a commercially zoned location. So we're making this, we're making the definition, which is right now pretty strict. I think what might be in it, in it, we might be putting a loophole in there. So if I, you know, if I'm renting cars, but I'm not in a fixed location, does that mean I'm not a rental agency and it's okay? Or if I'm not operating in a commercially zoned district, does that mean that I'm okay? That I'm not a rental agency and I can do whatever I want? Like, I think we have to, you know, I, I think the, I think we have to be careful our, right now and, you know, and then defining peer-to-peer, you know, is, we don't have to define it. If we're putting it under the cap, it's, it's part of the cap.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Tom, Tom or Dom?
I, I guess I have some just kind of general comments. There are some, as Attorney Cohen and others have said, some complicated legal issues here. And looking back to Attorney Riley's memo, which was very lengthy and very complicated in court cases on this, um, and to other comments about that no other municipalities in the Commonwealth are regulating this, um, makes it difficult and novel, like something else we spoke about tonight. I, I guess where I put the most stock or credence in tonight is, is the chief's comments on enforcement. I'm really worried that if we put something on the books that, that the police department would feel like that, that they'd obviously don't want to do selective enforcement and that could be a burden on them. And so I'm kind of leaning towards waiting till the state does something, but if we do do something, I think that we don't want to create, we don't want to be punitive, uh, we can't be, but we don't want to be punitive towards any class. And we need to allow a reasonable allotment of creating a new definition for these, whether it's 100, 150, to, to allow the market. Because we don't want to, this kind of reminds me, there's a short-term rental debate where, um, you kind of get into definitions. Well, a lot of people don't want the kind of corporate more model, but yet there are islanders, I'm sure town employees that do this, right? And, and folks trying to make a living here and make some extra money is, is a real thing. And I don't, it's going to be probably impossible to separate that in, in a bylaw. And should be because you, you don't want to be punitive towards any class. So I, I guess where my heart is, is to do, is to, is to kind of go towards what Matt's saying, but my head's saying is that this is, this is very complicated and because nowhere else has done it, that we may have to wait for the state. So I, I listened to my colleagues', um, thoughts on this. I'm open to, um, whatever you think.
So, so I'm gonna, um, it, in, in my mind, we have arguments toward families renting out their car to make a little extra money, right? Vehicles they already own, maybe one they acquire, they acquire a third car and they Turo it in the summer. And then we have, um, basically what to me feels like a small business, using an online platform, having multiple vehicles. And those, they may be folks who live here year-round and are using it to make some extra money and, and, but that feels more like a business than a sort of adjunct to life kind of thing. And then, of course, we already have an existing car rental agency system with medallions. So to my mind, as Tom said, with the short-term rental thing is, is how do we protect sort of the minimally invasive use of peer-to-peer car sharing? And not, and, and protect against what is a use of a new platform that maybe operates in a loophole or a gray area, you know, could operate in a gray area, whether it is so now in the bylaw. And then I honestly have had issue with the withhold, you know, the, the, the holding on to medallions. I feel like that's anti-competitive and I, I, I think as a practice, I think we all have basically come to agreement that that, we have to find a way to, to, um, bring that to a close. So I would ask, um, town council, how much latitude can be put in the hands of the board in this, in this bylaw amendment to test some different things and, and, um, change it around without having to go back to town meeting so that we can sort of pilot some ideas? So that we can sort of pilot some ideas and not be sort of jerking this around at the town meeting level? Does that question make sense, Brian?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. Hopefully you can hear me. That does make sense. And I guess I have a couple of thoughts and I'll, I'll try to make sense with those. You know, the, the town has its special act from 1989 authorized to enact bylaws requiring the annual licensing of motor vehicle rental agencies. And the, the bylaw now has a definition of that. And that's has, that includes the medallion system. I think the, I suppose one way to do it, there is another statute, chapter 40, section 22, which authorizes the select board, or authorizes the town either by bylaw or the select board through kind of regulations to, you know, manage how vehicles are used on public ways. And there's not a lot in the general laws about taxis or limousines. And that's, it's, when those are regulated, it's typically under that statute. So I guess it's conceivable to, to kind of handle peer-to-peer, whether it's, you know, some kind of registration sticker system and keep it outside of chapter 58 with, with the limited number of medallions. That, that might be one, one thing to, to attempt, right? Offhand, I don't think there's anything unlawful about that. That may be sort of what Mr. Cohen was saying at the end, that maybe there's a way outside of this whole rental agency and medallion system that the town can kind of see what's going on and have at least, at least some kind of handle over what, over what's going on. That might still, if we wanted to try that, it might still be worth putting something in this bylaw saying that peer-to-peer rentals are not considered rental agencies. I do, I did certainly hear all the, the comments about there's people out there with, you know, maybe double-figure cars that are doing this. So we could, I think one of the, one of the drafts that I sent, just a short one, was to sort of say, you know, if someone has two vehicles, that they're doing this, that they aren't, wouldn't, would not require medallions for that. Maybe something along those lines to put in, in the bylaw, if we wanted to try that and see, see if that works. I think it's true that if the medallion system, it, from everything I've heard, it's, it's not, has not been, it's not very efficient. There are people with medallions not using them. People may be wanting medallions, they can't get them. So perhaps, you know, perhaps you want to go after that first under this bylaw to try to tighten up the requirements for, for actually getting a medallion every year. I know Amy Baxter had, you know, proposed some things that would hopefully assist with that. I hope I haven't made a far confusing, Madam Chair, but, but, but I, I think there are ways to give the board some, some control over this issue that wouldn't necessarily be under chapter 58. But the, you know, we'll, we'll certainly try to craft whatever, whatever we think might work. However, the board wants to attempt that, you know, for this upcoming town meeting.
So at the risk of having a conversation with you, Mr. Riley, at the expense of the rest of the board listening, out of the box idea, we reduce the number of medallions under the car rental agency bylaw to something north, slightly north of what's actually been utilized on average. And then within the other section of the bylaw, create a new peer-to-peer registration system. Can we allocate a number or a cap on that? And then, and then define, as you described, anyone who owns more than one or two or whatever the number is, peer-to-peer. Limit the number of licenses under the peer-to-peer bylaw that, that anyone can get without crossing over into the car rental agency definition? And then require those people to secure medallions? And maybe we leave some available to individuals that want to go bigger than one or two? So that we're using that other bylaw to codify and register the sort of the, the category A I described, which is families renting out their car for a little extra income? And then, anyway.
It'd be something like greater than two cars at a register to give an address.
Yeah.
Because several people can fit on them.
Okay.
And then if you have more than that, then, then you by definition are a car rental agency.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Don?
Yeah, I, I think that you're heading in the right direction because, I mean, Tom really laid out the complexities of this. And part of the way we are heading is sort of a, a little bit ignoring that this is going to continue to go on. I like the idea of having a path and having the ability for these very small operations to exist. Basically, you know, one, one car is, is what really resonates with me in terms of at any given address. I don't think it should be more than one car. And I don't think, and we, we really have got to figure out the unused medallions. It, it needs, it needs to be in active use or you lose it.
And then we
Can go to people who want to have more than one car. That, that's not the really like ancillary to life, as you said.
And require them to have a location.
More of a business. And I do think we should put a, put some kind of a prohibition that these cannot be, be, be they can't operate out of public parking lots owned by the town.
Okay. Tom?
Yeah, I think, I think that is on the right lines to, if, if we're going to do anything and not wait for the state, that seems to me like, like thinking out loud, the one or two, or like Dawn said, one, it's a purple sticker. And then above that, you'd need a medallion and a different color sticker or something. Is that kind of what you're?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's, it's about defining them and clarifying. Matt?
We are, we are trying to design something now on a Wednesday night that we don't have the, that we, that, and, and this, you know, it's not going to end well. I think I was, you know, I'll go back 25 years. We were talking about car limitations. When we hit 25 or 30,000 cars, we were going to have gridlock on Old South Road, et cetera, et cetera. So one, and it's, and it's happened and it's happened how we thought it, how the consultants expected it to happen. And it's, you know, we're adding 200 cars a year. It's not true that this will solve everything and it isn't adding traffic. I know, I know people that have, you know, had two cars and the, someone started, and their family started renting. And they go, oh, this is great. They got another car. I've, you know, I've had employees who've started doing it. So one of the rental car agencies told me that they no longer get calls from the hotels and inns because the employees there are doing it. And so these are, this is, this is, you know, this is not, you know, this is, this is, so, so from a number perspective, if we say that anyone who wants to do it here can do one or two. If we can't figure out how to, how to oversee 700 with a sticker on a car, how are we going to track down 25,000 people and filter whether they have a sticker or not? And do I have one or two or three? You know, we're, we're making it even, we're making it even crazier. I think we have the ability, in, in the numbers, when I look at the car stuff, it's a numbers issue. We can't have, we can't add the incentive to put that many more cars on. We're going to kill the goose that laid the golden egg. You know, we're going to make, you know, we're going to make the traffic on Old South Road, you know, on every other road on the island. And, and so I think we've got to, we, we have to be really careful here. And if we kept it at 700 and we took 150 and we allocated 150 at one, at a single one to each person? So that, that to me, okay, that's something that is reasonable and, and it makes sense. I think anything that's outside and opens up and unlimited, I think is, I, I couldn't be more opposed to it. It would be the wrong long-range planning. It'd be the wrong for the, the island, you know? I think that, and I'm, and I'm not unsympathetic to people who are renting one and, you know, renting for their family and getting a little extra income. But I don't, you know, I think we can find a way to take care of that. But to open up businesses that are running out, without commercial property, without all those things, just because, you know, just because a, a venture fund that's got, you know, has a good algorithm, wants to make a ton of money, I, I think, and we're going to wait for the state? We, we would be crazy to do that. So, you know, that's all, I, I could go on all night about it, but you guys know how I feel. I know what, you know, so.
I'm just trying to find a path that gives us some flexibility in the future to control the number and also manages this issue of, of the total number. You know, we, we're either using the medallions that exist, recouping them and using them and, and putting these peer-to-peer cars rental into the medallion system? Or to my mind, we're taking some of the car rental agency medallions and reassigning them to a new category of peer-to-peer? The number stays the same in my mind. So I, I just don't know what's the best way to accomplish that from a registration, oversight, issuance of license, et cetera, point of view? Or, or procedures? So and you know, enforcement of anyone who's doing peer-to-peer and not complying is always going to be a problem. Whenever you establish a regulation, there's going to be an enforcement issue. But I do not believe we should just let this market burden uncontrolled. So.
Matt, I'm sure, I, I don't want to go into like the vast history of what, what's happened since 1988. But, and Matt, this is not a rebuttal at all, but nobody foresaw Uber and Lyft and Airbnb and Turo and all these things and the bylaw. Your points on why it was created in the cap, I completely, but we're, we're here. And I think we, we have to, we have to act and do something in the conditions that, that we have. Because they're, they're here. And I think one, the kind of, what Dawn said, the one, sounds reasonable to me.
Don?
I did just want, want to make one more point. And I've, I've said it before, but I do agree with Stephen Cohen that people are very resourceful. And if they want a car to drive on Nantucket, they, they are very often bringing them from, bringing rental cars from off-island. And that it would definitely be better to have people utilizing something that's already on island rather than exacerbating the boat reservation situation. But I think that we should consider doing the limitation to one and opening up a new sticker system. But I do think that that should also have a cap. I, I don't, I, I do agree with Matt. It shouldn't be that every single person on island can, can do this. And would probably, maybe we, we open up another 100 that are specifically, each household can have one. But it, but it ends once 100 people have signed up. And then there's an ongoing lottery of some sort. Or, or, or waiting list probably most likely because purchasing a vehicle is not something that you can just go back and forth on.
And then with the existing car rental agency medallions, are we then retrieving those and making those available to people who fall under the bylaw as, as running a car rental agency?
In, in my mind, yes. In, if, if I can speak, in my, in my mind, yes. I think that we, that we need to clean up that system, that if they're out of use, they're, they're no longer valid. And they, and they can be reallocated.
Matt?
If we were keeping the cap at seven or even 800, I think the car agencies may be, you know, the ones that aren't using it may be willing, if we have to talk to them. Because one has said that no one's reached out to them. I think we should be talking to them. I think that this, they don't want this thing to be, you know, 800 more this summer and, and 1,000 next summer because that's hurting their business and it's hurting the island. And it's hurt, you know, and their customers get in the cars and can't drive anywhere. You know, so, so they, you know, they are, I think that they'd be more willing to listen to that than you'd think. You know, and so, but if we could keep it at seven or even go up a little bit, but it's, it's got to be capped. It has to be, and they have to be included and, you know, in one per, you know, one per dwelling, you know, with a parking space for it, something like that, whatever. You know, or one, if it's your car, if you're really sharing it, you don't buy another one to do it. You're actually sharing your car. You're working and you don't need it and you're letting someone take it for the day. But if you're buying another one, you've started a business, you know? So I, I, I think those are the types of things we should be thinking about. And, and I could make a lot of money selling beer at my house. And if I did it 100 days a year, you know, if I, it would be ancillary. It wouldn't be a business because, you know, it, it's not my primary use. I'm just selling beer, you know, 100 hottest days this summer. Well, wait a minute, I can't do, that's not legal. You can't do that. You know, it's, it's beer and it sounds kind of crazy. And I mean, I'm saying that on purpose, but that's what we've got, you know?
So So, so we are a week away from adopting a warrant. We need to give town council direction on if we want to see something on this warrant, what do we want it to look like? That's the point of tonight's discussion. They have a week to prepare it and, and the point being, Matt, you know, outreach to all the constituencies, you know, we put something on the warrant and then there's a conversation and then we see what happens on the floor of town meeting as opposed to waiting till special?
Well, this is, we go to town meeting, it's going to be eviscerated, you know? I just, I, I
So should we postpone to special, I guess?
I have no, I, I, this is, I, I think that we started out, my sense is that we started out trying to do something that would, you know, that, do something that really was not going to, was, that we're all sort of saying we're not, we really don't want. And so now we're stuck trying to, you know, follow up on that.
Yep.
And, and I think we have, you know, so.
Malcolm?
Yeah, I'm not sure. More input from other people will help us. What I'm hearing is you limit it to 700. If you rent more than one car, you're an agency. And work, work that into that 700.
Okay. So
That's, that's where I'm beginning to hear modest consensus.
Okay. So we're either reallocating medallions within the 700 to another registration and licensing program?
Yeah.
Or we're requiring Turo users to get an existing medallion and create a path to that? Plan A or Plan B? To me, Plan A sounds to me, from Mr. Riley, gives us a little more room in the bylaw to, as a regulation, to adapt as we learn information. So Plan A, creating a new system under the, as a regulation of peer-to-peer versus amending the car rental bylaw to include peer-to-peer? And we retrieve and reallocate existing medallions? Does that sound like our choices at this, based on where we are?
I'd like to see it written and I would like to see an explanation of that. But it sounds, you know, if it can be outside and a right, if it can be, if we can keep them it sounds, you know, if it can be outside and right, if it can be, if we can keep the medallion as it is and take away one, you know, talk to them and take away, you know, have some of those reallocated to what you're talking about, I would consider something like that. And then we have to figure out how that's going to be administered and how it's going to fit, you know, with the medallions has been sort of, you know, so we have to figure that out, like, but, you know, but that, something like that I would like to see. And I want, I do want to make sure, I had a question earlier to town council about the definition. If we add too much specificity to the definition of rental agency, are we planning to add, keep, are we planning to add that? And if we are, does that specificity mean someone who isn't that is okay?
Yeah. Do, Brian, do you understand Matt's question about that sentence that you put in?
Yes, I do. I think, and I don't want to put words in her mouth if she's here, I, I think Amy Baxter actually put that in. And I think what she was thinking was if we're going to, if we're going to deal with, with peer-to-peer in this bylaw as well, then maybe it makes sense to try to, to try to define the rental agency, which is, you know, Hertz or, or the others, as someone who's actually in a commercial zone. You know, the zoning bylaw does say motor vehicle rental happens in a commercial zone. And then define peer-to-peer separately. And then from, excuse me, and then from there, such as limiting to, you know, one or two vehicles. And then from there, deciding whether our, our peer-to-peer also going to be subject to the same number of medallions, or maybe we have two different caps. I suppose there's different ways to go in that, but I, I think that's what Amy was intending when she added that set sentence that was in red about you have to be operating in a commercial zone location, sort of the more classic agency.
But, but I, I guess what I'm asking though is, is somewhat different is if I don't, we're defining rental agency as someone who does operate there, you know, in a commercial, et cetera. If in fact someone doesn't, does that mean they're not a rental agency and therefore they can, you know, they can do what they want? Like, so if, so like we, I'm just, I'm trying, I'm seeing unforeseen consequences of that.
Okay.
Does, am I reading that correctly?
I, I hear exactly what you're asking and I, I kind of have the same question. I, I'm a little worried, you know, your comment, Matt, about we're trying to craft legislation on a Wednesday night and it's hard. And this is what happens every year when the warrant comes up and we have to, you know, the.
And we haven't got it done prior.
Right.
And here we are.
Yep. So. May I suggest that we ask town council, Mr. Riley, to sort of pursue this option of using regulation to oversee peer-to-peer, separate from the car rental agency? And then we keep the car rental agency defined by a number of, two or more vehicles? If we're talking about one for peer-to, true peer-to-peer, right? And then, and then we have to ask the question, if there's a community member who has more than one, do they have to have a brick and mortar location or a commercial location to operate on? And I, I don't think we need to answer that question tonight, but that, that's the, that's the question that hangs in the balance. Amy, Amy, your hands up again?
Yes, Madam Chair, I just, since my name was, was brought up, I just wanted to clarify anything if you needed to, but I think Mr. Riley did so as well. We did just define that because the bylaw was written before the internet was really a commercial place of business. So we wanted to do that and have a separate definition for peer-to-peer internet-based companies. But I think I understand what you're looking for and where you're going, so I, I can work with Brian on putting that together, because we did discuss a registration system earlier.
Okay. So, so if something can be brought to us next week and, and we feel comfortable enough to communicate why we're doing it, what we're doing to town meeting? And if we, we can't, then we can contemplate pushing this to special. So. Does that feel comfortable for the moment? I mean, not comfortable, but okay. Libby?
Just to try to clarify a little bit what you're, what the concept is here? Is the concept that the number of rental vehicle medallions in the existing bylaw would be reduced by, say, 100? So instead of whatever it is now, reduced by 100? And then that 100 number would be the limit for the peer-to-peer car sharing?
Yeah, I think that's what we're.
That's what I would like, but.
So, and then the peer-to-peer car sharing would be limited to you can only rent one?
Per address.
Per address, okay. And that would have some kind of, that would just have a different colored sticker? That's a detail that can be resolved later, but is that the general concept?
Yes. And then I think what we're saying is we stick to 700 and by putting it in the regulations, if there's a compelling reason to go higher, we can go higher on the peer-to-peer side at a later date, right?
I have a legal question.
Yeah.
If we do this, as we're, as we're saying, and we've defined peer-to-peer and we've said they're not the rental agency one, they're not under 58, which clearly they are now, are we then beholden to the state when the state makes the rules and says, there's nothing you can do with peer-to-peer? You know, I, I think we would be and I think we would, you know, I think we'd have to be careful not to be trying to do something like this, you know, because it's easy for, you know, I, anyway, there's my, there's my concern about doing a regulation that the state's going to then, you know, tell you can't, they've voted this, what we have is voted. So that has, that, I would like an analysis of that, you know, of those issues. I don't, I don't want to try to be solving something and making it even worse.
Madam Chair, just, just very briefly, I, I think that's a great, that's a great point. I mean, I, I would say that, let's say the, the town comes up with some kind of regulatory system for peer-to-peer and, you know, it's on the books, whether it's a regulation or a bylaw. If, you know, who knows exactly what the legislature is going to do, but if they come out with a new statute of the deals with peer-to-peer, you know, that's going to, that's going to overrule any inconsistent bylaw as well. But, you know, we'll, we'll try not to make it too radical and, and maybe it would work alongside whatever they might do, whenever they might do it.
Okay, thanks. Matt Peels had his hand up for a while. I'm going to give him a minute to weigh in.
Thank you, Brooke. I'll make this extremely brief. I, I, I'm not going to comment on regulation or anything. I'll leave that up to you guys, you know, but I think to Tom's point, there is a lot of similarities and lessons that we've learned from the STR process here. And I've just urged the board to act quickly on this, because I could just see, you know, if you guys wait till the special or wait till next fall, all to make some regulations or changes or putting any bylaws on this through the town meeting process, that citizen articles are also going to start pouring in. And this could be the new STR, where we're seeing three or four articles for the same kind of, for the same topic. And, you know, it's, that's kind of what's happened, the SCR side of it. So I just urged the board to act quickly, you know, and if you can bypass that side of it, great.
Okay, good point. Thanks, Matt. Okay, so everybody good with the direction we're headed for next week? And then we'll have one more round and just make, make a decision. Okay, Libby, is there anything else on the warrant?
Okay. Okay, Erica, if you can. Okay. Yeah, go, go back up. I think you, I think you passed the car rental stuff, because that looks like home row petitions. I don't, I just don't remember if the car rental thing was near those.
What are you looking for? Which one?
The article that's just the next article after the car rental.
Wasn't it, was that bikes at the very end?
Okay, so just, let me.
And Libby, one more home row petition down? Good news?
Yeah, another down. All right, so go past this. All right, stop there a second. Okay, so e-bikes. We have two articles that I think were down to two. There were four going around earlier today of different wordings and comments, versions, thank you. And there's, there are two in your packet. Can you pull those up, Erica? And Brian, can you perhaps explain this? So while this is coming up, we have had e-bikes on your outline since October and there's kind of been some versions going back and forth between different parties about how exactly to regulate e-bikes, and it's not really just e-bikes. I think it's electric scooters as well. And Brian, you want to explain what you've come up with here? And this has had the review of the police chief, because obviously there's going to be an enforcement component to this that needs to be reasonable. And Brian, as you're formulating your remarks, I want to somehow get at that, those comments that I had about the written permission of people using the bike paths?
Right, which is in the, which is in chapter 98 right now, I see. Well, I suppose that if, if, if there are different areas in town where these, you know, well, public ways are kind of a unique thing, but, you know, other parks and areas that people want to use these devices, in that, in that first paragraph, there are, am I in the right one here? No, I'm sorry, I'm looking at chapter 98.
Well, evidently, in order to regulate the e-bikes and/or scooters, there needs to be changes to both of these bylaws? Is that correct?
I think, I think that is correct. And let me just get the right one in front of me.
Should we, should we hold this and spend some more time on it next week? Or is that going to be?
We certainly could. I am getting a little nervous about the timing.
Yeah.
But we certainly could hold it till next week and maybe, Brian, you can take, I, I just didn't see any comments from you about that, written permission situation?
Right. Yeah, I did, I did see that you, you asked that to me and I did not get back to it.
When I see these all.
I'm sorry.
When, when I see these versions with all comments and stuff, it's really hard to track what is actually being recommended. I don't know if the rest of the board feels that way. So I'm not as concerned about the track changes as what are we proposing and why described to us?
Okay.
I'm getting a lot of head nods.
Well, if it, it, it might be most efficient if I can try to clean these up, these things that have been circulating, take the comments off, and be ready to talk about why, whether it was something Mr. Topham proposed, something, something that I edited, or something which Chief Casper had concerns about as well, which are mostly in the, the chapter 98, I believe. It may make, it may be better for, for all of us if we try to do this next week and see if this is in, in shape to, you know, put to town meeting right now or not.
Okay. And I'd love to invite Mr. Topham to come too, so if he.
Yeah, I think he maybe just could.
Oh, hi. Oh, hi, Joe, sorry.
I'll wait till next week.
All right. It just feels too, it's late, we're tired, and I think we're not.
I, I'm with you. It's fine.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Madam Chair, I have a sense that we have too much for this town meeting.
Perhaps. We'll decide that for sure next week.
I think we have too much. There's too many potential significant controversial issues to be discussed.
I might amend the express written permission part and have it be the slugboard chair has to approve anyone that wants to go on the path.
You can be chair.
Or maybe I'll put your name on it. Brooke Moore will approve you.
You're still funny, Matt?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to be a bunch drunk.
So that can, that will come back next week. The outdoor lighting bylaw, that's off. We could potentially do that in the fall.
Yeah.
And just keep going. There's just, I just want to bring to your attention a few updates from last week. When's that said?
Oh, I think you were wondering if you should go back up.
Oh, oh, yeah, that, never mind about that. This article about the erosion. Backs a road property for erosion control. You didn't come to specific last week and there was some discussion, if you recall, it's noted in the comments?
We were, do we do separate articles for the choir, the separate choir NOI versus the SVPF NOI? The joint application, right? That's kind of where we.
Yeah, I think, I think.
We got stuck. And I think that the, the concerns were that the more appealing quarrel log, the less controversial quarrel log would, might go, might go.
Steve Cohen has his hand raised.
Get rejected.
I think he's going to tell you.
Okay, yeah, let's let Stephen speak for a second.
I thank you, Madam Chair. I think I have very good news on this, but I would like to go back and just take a moment for a different warrant article. But I could vehemently recommend and support the article for the Tom Nevers Bike Path. I think you'll all hopefully agree with that article and, and that'll pass. We don't need to get into why I support it, I think you all know.
Appreciate that, Stephen.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. The warrant article for the quarry might separate, or the whole issue of it being confusing might go away. The recommendation right now of SVPF to the Conservation Commission is just to allow these people that have had this quarry for 20 years to continue maintenance of it as a, would be adopted as one of the conditions under the notice of intent for the geo-tubes, and therefore there would only be one permit, so there would not be multiple, notice of intent or multiple orders of conditions for people to be concerned with. The Conservation Commission, I believe, had a concern with that only in the, to the extent that the, the quarry is not part of the joint application, although they're okay, they seemed okay with the idea of having it be a condition. They just wanted to have, I think they were looking for some comment from the town, that the town doesn't have a concern with that condition being added to this permit with some clarification, that that is a separate issue, it's paid for by those homeowners, which it would continue to be, and, and, you know, it's not SPPF of the town paying for it, and that it, although it's adopted as a condition of that permit, that it's, that that part is not joint. So we don't need to discuss that today, but SPPF is, you know, going to withdraw that notice of intent for the second quarry article, or notice of intent in the second issue. So as long as we can move forward with the, with the first one, with that condition. So I think at this point, there's no need for you to worry about it and you can just see how things go with the Conservation Commission. And if there's a need to do some change later, you always can through the Finance Committee, but at the moment, there's no need to. you always can through the Finance Committee, but at the moment, there's no need to worry about it, because likely that order, or notice of intent is going to be withdrawn.
Okay, so just a version that covers all of that, one article?
Correct.
Okay, thanks, Stephen. Is that clear? Emily?
All right, so that, so that article will stay on as is?
Yeah, Emily just has a remark. Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. That actually clarifies or helps my comments quite a bit, because I was going to suggest that I thought it would be confusing for the community to have two projects that might fall under one, and that, being that the other project isn't joint with the town, it might make more sense to come forward as a citizens' warrant article, but it sounds like that might not be an issue. Since I'm here and you guys are talking about this article, I would also just let you know, when this was on the warrant last time around, we had some concerns that we had started to vocalize that this article is so broad, and
One.
It seems to.
Could you mute him there?
In some ways, the bylaw provision that requires town meeting approval for these projects is really intended to give the town an opportunity to approve a specific project that's being proposed on a specific area of beach. And in this instance, my reading of it makes it seem as though it's pretty much any type of coastal erosion project could be, this beach could be leased or licensed for in perpetuity. And so I think that there could be some concerns without any type of timeframe associated with it, or greater specificity to this particular project, as far as there not being a point at which town meeting would be able to participate in discussions about some future project in this area that, at this point, may be unknown. So I just would raise that to you now, because I'm here and you're talking about it, but the other concern about the two projects seems to have gone away, which is good news, I think. Thank you.
So Emily, can I ask you a question?
Please.
If this were limited to the, the current NOI?
I think that would be helpful.
Is that what you're suggesting? Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Boards, thoughts about that? Do we want to direct town council to?
It should be this current NOI. I think this is going to be a very difficult vote.
Okay.
I think this, I think, you know, there's going, there's a lot of questions about maintenance, and how can we ensure in the future, and why it didn't happen before? And the, that stuff all has to be sort of, for this to have any chance of passage, in my mind, I think that stuff has to be airtight. So.
And the, the point is that there may be concern that we can eliminate by restricting the scope of the license to permissions granted in the current NOI?
Yes.
And if that goes in here, then we, that, at least that concern that might bring opposition could be alleviated in advance?
Yeah, no.
Yes, Madam Chair. Okay, nobody, nobody reacted?
Everyone's shaking their head.
Okay.
You know, this part, yes, it should be just this.
Okay.
But then I'm saying that we're going to have to convince, you know, or, you know, or the, someone's going to have to convince, the voter, it's going to be a hard vote. And I think that we need to, you know, that there's, we're going to have to address the sand shortages and issues that, you know, that we've not had a lot of control over, and, and I think that that, you know, so the conditions that Concom has, or the conditions of a license from us, if we do one, those are going to be crucial, and people are going to want to know that.
Yep.
So, or they're not going to vote for this.
Got it. Okay, good, keep going.
This is a really long one, the transfer fee. There was a bit of discussion during the week as to whether or not this needed to stay in to be considered in the legislative session, I think the ending answer was yes. So Erica, if you can just scroll through that one, it's pretty long. Okay, that one that's stricken, that's the sewer act, and that has actually now been signed by the governor. I think I said they're not, but it now has been. That was very recent. The charter. I have that shown as stricken, but I don't, I, I didn't get word that that has been signed by the governor yet. So hopefully by next week, we'll know. That's kind of a long one. The pension, no. The fertilizer, we talked about last week, the pension, none of these have passed. School, street, I think you, I think you've already agreed to keep all these in. And then we have some real estate. There's a new, newish article in here for Tom Nevers Road, this involves, it's kind of associated with the bike path, but, long story short, there are some state interests involving Tom Nevers Road, and this would allow the transfer of those state interests to the town, and then the town to the county. And then we've reviewed most of these other ones, 48 Sparks, we talked about last week, that was Non-Ticket Education Trust. And then real estate, not, sorry, not real estate, these utility easements for a variety of different projects, those are all sorted. The long-term lease still needs legal review for Seven Amelia Drive, citizen article, and then more citizen articles, and stabilization funding free cash, and that's it. But go quickly down a little bit more through the election ballot. We've, so we've got all the offices, of course, supplemental funding for Public Works, the debt, and that's a debt exclusion, debt exclusion for Island Home, the debt exclusion for Tom Nevers, the town employee housing, and the capital outlays, which I have somewhere now. And they'll be more final next week, when you hear from the Capitol Program Committee about what they are recommending. And then the non-binding ballot question from the Town Council Study Committee. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you to everyone for bearing with us. Any, we're good, right? Any committee reports? Everybody's too tired to speak. Next up, our favorite part of the meeting.
Who'd you join?
Somebody wants a second? By roll call, Matt?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All right, on to next week. Thanks, everybody out there who's listening and watching, have a good night.